All right. I'm going to call the meeting to order. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record, this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. We're also broadcasting through the town via Zoom. If you could please rise to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Our first order of business is to recognize our water superintendent, Mark Clark. You're on the hot seat tonight, so welcome. We're sad to see you retiring. We're so glad you're here so that we can recognize you for all your years of dedicated service to the town. And we're going to make it a little uncomfortable for you so everyone can give their comment. All right, go ahead. I don't know if you want to start, but I just wanted us to have each have the opportunity to thank you. And we have a little presentation for you. Mr. Wallner?
I'll just say, I see him every morning I'm outside because he drives by right to the pumping station there. And I know he's doing his work in there. So I see you more than anybody. But thank you for, I know you've done a lot. I haven't known you all the years, but by the time I have known you, I've known you've done a significant amount to contribute to the efforts we're doing and to keeping things running smooth the way you have. So I thank you very much. And I know you play guitar too, so I hope you keep playing in the future, music for the rest of your life. So thank you very much.
Mr. O'Leary?
Well, I had the opportunity the other day to, his fellow town employees had a little farewell party for him Friday afternoon. And what a great venue, what a great presentations that were made. A lot of hidden talents that were shown by some of your colleagues. There's singers, there's, you know, some of the things we didn't even know about your colleagues. But then again, you know, they had good reason to celebrate. You know, we're all celebrating that you have the opportunity to retire in your terms and your conditions, and good for you. You know, it's going to be a tremendous loss for us. And I think what the public needs to understand and recognize is that the role that you played over the last 28 years, for the most part, very quietly. But if not for you, and I know your colleagues, and I know you share a lot of the accolades with your fellow colleagues in Department of Public Works, but you, through your leadership position, really have been delivering good, potable water to the town of North Reading for your 28 years. And there have been some challenges over those times, for sure. But more importantly, you know, just a few years back when we were, when we had the need to negotiate long-term deals with either the MWRA or the town of Andover, it was your steady guidance and leadership that assisted us in bringing that to fruition. And for that, this community should be forever grateful to you. Because, you know, while you weren't the face out front necessarily to the public, you certainly were the face up in Andover when mine needed to be removed. And we had to insert some sense into the whole thing and give some credibility to the idea that it was a good deal for Andover and North Reading at the same time. And what most people don't recognize is that you attended a significant number of public hearings up there and helped sell that project to the residents of the town of Andover, the town meeting, and the elected officials out there. And we ended up with a 99-year deal. So none of us are going to go thirsty. And as it turned out, we had a problem here in North Reading. We had to turn on the spigot sooner, and we were able to do so seamlessly. And through your efforts, we're extremely grateful. Personally, I'm extremely grateful for your advice and counsel over the years. And I have turned to you on many occasions, and I hope to be able to turn to you moving forward, even though you retired, for some guidance and some common sense and to calm me down at certain things. So Mark, you've been a tremendous asset to the community, tremendous public servant. And not enough appreciation was shown over the years to you. So I want to publicly thank you personally. And again, as an elected public official who was here for the entire time that you've been here, we've been extremely fortunate. So I bless you. And I tell you, enjoy your retirement, you know? I hope you catch the big one, you know? Go out there, do some fishing. Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
So I was also able to be present for your retirement party. And it was so obvious by the things that were said to you by your colleagues, by the people that worked for you, with you over the years, what a loss it's going to be, how many hats you wore besides the one you were hired for. It will be a great loss. It was a great party. And, you know, at first, I didn't know why we were at the moose, you know? There's so many places you can go to. And then when I was leaving, I saw the big water tower and thought, how appropriate. Still standing. So I just, I want to thank you also. It will be a loss. It'll be hard to replace you. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Studo? Sorry I missed your party. It was school vacation week, and I don't make the rules that week. So, but in the short time that we've known each other, the meetings you've gone, I can say that my understanding of the history of everything related to water in the town, it was like a crash course. It's like you're a human Google for everything water North Reading. And I know that it saved me a lot of time of digging and trying to figure out what was accurate and what wasn't. Also, it allowed me a lot of the time to make a lot of informed decisions with some of the more, you know, like trash, which, you know, we haven't talked about for a while, but I'm sure it will come back. So, you know, I really did appreciate it. And it's too bad because I have seen in three years now that it can be very difficult to replace employees that do more than just what their job description does, especially since it seems like you spearheaded a lot of programs that are going to make North Reading for the better. And again, I always do appreciate you inadvertently using my home for one of your examples about water use. I did appreciate that. But enjoy your retirement. Hopefully, you're not leaving town. And I'm sure I'll hopefully bump into you somewhere. So thank you again.
Thank you.
And I'm going to echo what everyone else said to you. And when I first started on the board, the water project was the big talk. It was the big discussion. And I knew right away what a pivotal role you played in getting that squared away and getting that really sewn up for the town. And also, all of the work and effort you've been doing on the proposed sewer project as well. Just, we can't say enough, all of the things you do, all of the extra things you do, all of the extra time, all the extra effort, all the extra phone calls, all the extra meetings. Those are the unseen things that we know that you do. So we can't give you enough accolades for how dedicated you've been to this town and how much of an impact you've had for the entire town on all of that, from all of that dedication that you've given us. The epitome of a good leader, just in terms of your calm, cool, collectedness, your humbleness, your answers to all of our questions, even some crazy questions that we might have just to get an understanding of the things that you know like the back of your hand. It's very, was very, very helpful to us. I hope you're not going too far so that we might still be able to give you a call. But I also wish you all the best. You deserve it. You deserve this time to pursue whatever the things you want to pursue. And I hope you have a grand old time in retirement. And have some fun, you know, for a change.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for everything. And Mrs. Hurlbut wants to talk too. Mrs. Hurlbut?
I've worked with Mark for 22 years in one capacity or another, many of which were on the finance committee. But I also served as layers to the water conditioners. And also, I believe we were on a hiring duty at one point. And Mark is nothing but amazing. And there have been obviously been controversies and discussions where not everybody on the same page. And the great thing about Mark is that he lets everybody feel good about themselves. And he carries on with a certain confidence. He always has the right information and is easy to deal with. And he's just kid as a baby.
You're making him blush.
I always go into his office and say that.
Mr. Kelleher, thank you, Mrs. Hurlbut.
I've worked with Mark for a bunch of years. Well, fucking nice name, isn't it? Mark, you have been the guru, probably the most credible person that I've ever worked with in this town. Ask your question, you have a straight answer. No beating around the bush. And I appreciate that. I wish you well in your retirement. You'll enjoy it, I'm sure. Find something to do to keep your busy.
I will, I will. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can everybody hear me okay? NORCAM, you got me all right? So I shared some comments at your farewell event on Friday. And I'll just give folks here a little bit of synopsis of that, which is that, you know, when something went wrong, you know, Mark was always the cool, calm, and collected voice to try to resolve it and to kind of just identify what the steps were we needed to take. And it happened on a couple of occasions in my tenure here, and I'm sure it happened prior to my tenure here as well. And I can imagine folks in my role relying and depending on you then in the same way that I did. I use an analogy of, you know, Mark was kind of like a firefighter. You know, I think we all, those of us who are not in public safety, when we see a firefighter or police officer running, we're concerned. We become concerned. I think most of us, you know, have that reaction. And I sort of looked at, if Mark identified something was an issue, it was a really big issue, we needed to deal with it. And he also knew when something wasn't really the end of the world, although it might have seemed that way at the moment it came across my desk. And I overreacted to it at different points in time. But the last thing I want to say is to the residents at home, many of you have dealt with Mark. And, you know, you have made comments to me in, you know, my going on nine years working for the town. I'm sure you've made comments to select board members over the years as well about Mark. And I want you to know, and I, Mark, I want you to hear that, you know, those of us who will be here on Wednesday after your last day, you know, we strive to meet the example that you set. I think for many of us, there's a couple of us in the room here right now who work for the town. If we could be in the spot that you're in right now at the end of our career and have the respect that you have earned in the community, that would be quite an accomplishment for all of us. And, you know, you don't just leave a fully intact, functional, high-quality water system here in North Reading. You leave a number of colleagues who will strive to excel in the way that you did. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you.
So I just wanted to say really quickly, thank you to people. It's been 28 years. I will tell you this, I left, I worked in Haverhill before I came down here. And I worked there for six years. I live in Haverhill. And it literally was a three-quarter mile walk from my house to the water treatment plant where I worked out of. I sold my car, rain, snow, everything. I walked for six years from my house to that place. When I left there, I thought, I'm leaving my community. I'm never going to find this sense of belonging again. And I was absolutely wrong about that. When I came to North Reading, the people I worked with here, the people on the boards, the residents, the people in the front of the room here, and especially the people I worked with at Town Hall, just, and the DPW guys, just a great sense of belonging, just a great sense that this was more than a job. It was more than a career. It was, you know, it really was part of my life, and I enjoyed it. You know, I'd never realized the level of feeling people had for me that I heard. I've told people it's been like going to my funeral here in the, the eulogy, you know, while I'm still alive. It's nice, but it's a little weird, but especially. But I just want to say to everybody here, thank you. You know, Steve and Mike, that whole Andover negotiation thing. I mean, people don't realize, we were there some nights till 1:30 in the morning negotiating with Andover. And I'll say this, I would have walked away, but Steve was just like, he was like a pit bull latched onto them. And we're going to get the deal we want out of this. And, but it's been, it's been 28 years. It's been a good 28 years. And like I said at my retirement, I think way more good times than bad times, way more happy memories than sad memories, and way more friends than enemies I've made in North Reading. So I just want to say to the whole community, thank you. And it's been just a great experience for me. So thank you.
Get back here. All right, we have a little, we have a little plaque to present to you.
I'm always a little socially clumsy.
And this is just, obviously, the town comment, a picture of the town comment presented to Mark Clark in recognition of 28 years of dedicated service to the town of North Reading as water superintendent, given by the Select Board on behalf of a grateful community February 27, 2023.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's all get in this, come on now. All right, we'll just do a quick couple photo up. Quick photo. Get right in the middle there.
Heighten it up.
Heighten it up. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair, through you, just quickly, a true leader will find gifts in people that they don't even know they have and bring them out. And at his party, we had a musical song sung by his colleague. And we also had poetry from a bookstore in there. So I just thought that that needed to be said. Very nice.
It was very good.
All right. No more fun stuff. Okay, so we're going to move on to our next order of business, which is to the proclamation on Dollars for Scholars. And do we have anyone here?
You have somebody here, do you want some?
Oh, yes, sure. No, you know, we'll, we'll give you the microphone.
Use the podium.
Go right over there, that mic's.
Oh, perfect, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, all right. Commercial. Let's hear it.
I'm Amy DeChara, along with Brenda B. Harrell and our student representatives Lucia and Sabrina Mini. We are with North Reading Dollars for Scholars, which was founded in 1963. And we're a nonprofit organization that is dedicated to providing financial assistance to North Reading residents pursuing education beyond high school. We're a board made up of community members, business owners in North Reading. Our president Kathy Archivati unfortunately is unable to attend tonight due to personal matters. And I'll let Brenda say a few words.
Sure. So what's coming up in a couple of weeks is the Dollars for Scholars Phone-A-Thon. And what that is, it's kind of turned into a Mail-A-Thon, actually. So students, high school students, will be volunteering to make phone calls to our residents, asking for donations for our scholarships, which will be presented in June. And last year, we raised over $11,000. Other years, we've raised up to $25,000. And the scholarships that were granted were worth $22,200 last year. And it was presented to 32 graduating seniors and 12 postgraduate students. And in all, since 1963, a total of $1,046,625 in scholarships has been awarded to over 2,325 residents of North Reading. So please be as generous as you can. I know sometimes times are tough, but the scholarships do go to the seniors this year. And if the board, North Reading Dollars for Scholars Board is always looking for new volunteers, so if you want to join us, you can reach us through the website.
Give us a website, too.
Okay, so the website is northreading.dollarsforscholars.org. And the email is NRdollarsforScholars@gmail.com.
Great, great.
Any questions?
Is there a way to donate on the website?
Yes, there is. Yep, a way to donate online.
Or mail a check in?
Yes, the mailer will be going to all the residents, and it has a return envelope, so you can just stick your check in and send it on back.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? So my colleagues have any questions?
Oh, I do, I do have one other thing.
Sure.
Sorry. So the Dollars for Scholars also has an endowment fund, and it's made up of several endowments. People create an endowment for someone, a loved one that's passed, or like the class of 1963 has one, or businesses create an endowment. And all the interest from those funds is also used to fund the scholarships.
Great, that's great. Okay, any questions? Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, I just want to, again, thank the board and the students for their efforts because it's, that's amazing, a million dollars in all the years. That's fantastic. I know that my two sons were beneficiaries of the Dollars for Scholars. And my father, who spent 20 some odd years on the school committee, when he passed away, we formed an endowment fund in his name and contributed to that too. So I would encourage everybody to participate. It goes to a worthy cause, goes to local students, and it's all volunteer. And so please, be as generous as possible and support their cause. But thank you for all your efforts. Good luck with your fundraising, and I hope you don't get any paper cuts, you know, with the envelopes or anything, stuff in the envelopes. But thank you very much for all your efforts.
Thank you. Anybody else? If we don't, I'm going to read the proclamation.
So you want me to do the, yeah, I'll do the, I'll do the motion first?
Do you want, oh, do you want to do the, sure.
Motion first, and then.
All right, that's fine. Do I have a motion?
Yes, you do. Madam Chair, I move to proclaim March 6 through 7, 2023, as North Reading Dollars for Scholars Week, and to read the attached proclamation.
6 through 9?
Second.
6 through 9?
6 through 9.
Okay, motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Right.
Me and Yaupelli is aye. And so I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas the North Reading Dollars for Scholars is a group of hardworking, dedicated individuals, and whereas the North Reading Dollars for Scholars members have devoted both time and talent to the difficult task of seeking scholarship funds for deserving students, and whereas North Reading Dollars for Scholars is planning its annual Phone-A-Thon for the week of March 6 through 9, 2023, where high school students will contact all North Reading homes by phone and mail, seeking pledges to the North Reading Dollars for Scholars Scholarship Fund. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of North Reading, do hereby proclaim the week of March 6 through 9, 2023, as North Reading Dollars for Scholars Week, and urge all citizens to open their hearts and their purses to the benefit of North Reading students who want to continue their education. And it's signed by the Select Board. Thank you. Thank you. Can you, while I'm signing this, will you, one more time, give us the website and the email, please?
Sure, the website, northreading.dollarsforscholars.org. And students can actually start applying. The deadline for applications is April 1st. And the email is NRdollarsforScholars@gmail.com.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. And good luck. All right, now our next.
Don't feel obliged to spend the whole meeting here.
All right, we're right on time. So our next order of business is the warrant article information hearing for the March 6, 2023 special town meeting. And I know that, how are you? I know that we have a presentation, but I see the petitioner here joining us. This is a citizen's petition? Oh, yeah, the public notice. Sorry about that. Hold on a second, we have to do the public notice.
It's holding the table up.
It's holding the table up, yeah.
I forgot about that. Or if you just want to tell me what page it is, right? We'll open the public hearing. We open the public hearing usually reading the public notice of the hearing. Thank you, all right. The Town of North Reading Notice of Informational Hearing. The North Reading Select Board does hereby notify the residents of the town of North Reading that an in-person and virtual informational hearing on the following article contained in the March 6, 2023 special town meeting warrant will be held Monday, February 27, 2023, 8:00 p.m. North Reading High School Distance Learning Lab, 189 Park Street. The hearing may be accessed virtually. The information on accessing the meeting is included in the publication, the Zoom and phone number. This hearing will represent an opportunity for residents to learn more about the article on the special town meeting warrant, to ask questions, and to engage in discussion in advance of the special town meeting. A listing of warrant articles is as follows. Article 1, Citizen's Petition. Amend Code of North Reading General Bylaw, Chapter 25, Assessments. This hearing is held pursuant to Section 18-25 of Chapter 38 of the Massachusetts General Law, the Open Meeting Law. Any interested citizen is welcome to attend and/or participate in this hearing. Notice of Explanation. It is the unanimous desire of the North Reading Select Board to encourage and allow the highest level of public participation in making decisions that affect North Reading. This warrant article hearing is intended to represent an opportunity for extended virtual discussion in advance of the special town meeting. We sincerely hope that you will join us for this hearing on February 27, 2023, at 8:00 p.m. Select Board Members, and it was published 2/23/2023 in the North Reading Transcript. So we'll open, we'll open the public meeting on this matter. And for those in attendance, the special meeting is a one article, one warrant article meeting, and it was called for based on citizen petition. It's not a meeting that was proposed by the board or any other committee or board in the, in the town. It's a citizen's petition. So that meeting will be held. And what we've been doing as a board in advance of any of our special town meetings and regular town meetings in, since COVID, from and since COVID, when we had to go to virtual, is we've been holding these informational hearings in advance of those town or special town meetings. So we're, we're going to diverge a little bit since I can see the proponent is here, Mr. Austin is here. We would typically, as a board, explain the purpose, you know, the warrant articles. But since it's a citizen's petition, if, Mr. Austin, if you don't mind to address the attendees, we'll give you a microphone. Oh, no, you can go to the podium, that'd be good. And just explain the purpose for the petition and the rationale for the petition. Sure, sure, yeah. Just if you could introduce yourself too, please.
Of course. Good evening, my name is Adam Austin. I live at 42 Main Street. In May of 2022, the Select Board asked for our trust. They claimed that they needed more flexibility in the Betterment Bylaw to develop a proposal for wastewater that would be reasonable and fair to everyone in town. We granted that trust and voted to change the bylaw at that time. In hindsight, that was clearly a mistake. Unfortunately, we now know that the plan that they wanted to implement once the bylaw was changed was neither reasonable nor fair. In contrast to what we were told last June, the town administrator has now admitted that after the bylaw was changed, the financial plan for the wastewater project was designed to charge the absolute maximum betterment fees. This plan was not just unreasonable for a butters. It was misleading to all of the taxpayers of the town.
Excuse me, Mr. Austin, I asked you to step forward. What we need you to do is explain the change. Explain what you're asking on this warrant article. So if you could direct it to the facts of the bylaw and why you're asking for this bylaw change and what specific changes there are, if you could zone in on that, okay? bylaw change and what specific changes there are, if you could zone in on that, okay?
Appreciate the background.
This, this is really, and, excuse me, sir, excuse me. I've asked the petitioner to come and explain. If the petitioner cannot do that, we'll certainly explain it, but this is a citizen petition, so we need for the information of the people attending, for you to explain what changes you're asking to be made at the town, the special town meeting, if you could focus in on that. Sir, you, please, we need to use this opportunity. This is an informational hearing and we need to use this opportunity. Excuse me, excuse me, sir, ma'am. What we need to do is explain the purpose for the meeting and what the changes are. We haven't heard that yet. We haven't heard that yet. Please, Mr. Austin.
It was misleading to all of the taxpayers of the town, most of whom would receive no direct benefit from the project. The proposed betterment assessment significantly, significantly exceeded the amount allowed by the fairness clause in Massachusetts General Law on the vast majority of abutting properties. The amount assessed above the increase in property value that could be directly attributed to the sewer project would be subject to abatement. This would cause the true amount of the project that would be shouldered by all taxpayers of North Reading to grow substantially. It is not clear exactly how much of the burden would have shifted, as the $3 million that was spent on studies for the project did not include any study of the impact of the proposed sewer system on the value of abutting single-family residences.
Mr. Austin, I'm going to interrupt you again to ask you to focus on the changes you're asking citizens to vote on. This is not about a sewer project. This bylaw that you're asking citizens to modify has to do with all future water and potential sewer projects. We're not here for a discussion on a proposed sewer project. We're here to hear from you on what the requested changes are in the bylaw. If you could please focus in on that, I would appreciate it. Sir, sir, it's through the chair. Public comment is through the chair. We will recognize you after Mr. Austin explains what the purpose for the bylaw changes on the petition. Please, if you could direct it to the facts of what you're asking to be changed in the bylaw. It applies to all water and sewer proposed projects in the future, so if you could focus on that, that's what we need to hear.
That's right, but I would like to give some background on exactly why it's necessary. It's clearly necessary because of the abuse of the change. We were asked to change the bylaw to give the Select Board powers as sewer commissioners to assess betterments in the way that they claimed would be reasonable to the town. Now, we've seen that the only reason that the abuses were not permitted was because non-abutting residents of the town stepped in and determined that they would not accept having their neighbors violated in this way. So, it's important that we give the background and let everyone know why it's important to change the bylaw back. The bylaw in its previous iteration had protections built in for abutters. Before the bylaw was changed, it took a majority of abutters, a vote of a majority of abutters to approve a project with a proposed betterment stated clearly at a special meeting that was a not-to-exceed value. At this point, that's been taken away, and when the project was proposed directly thereafter, it was clearly not a fair project. So, it's important that moving forward, whether, whether, you know, at the, at the last town meet, or, excuse me, at the last Select Board meeting, we saw some different proposals. Basically, the town was not going to accept this unfair proposal, and so the Select Board was forced to go back, look at other options, and come up with new proposals. Now, if one of those goes through, if there's, if things go with a privilege fee or a betterment off the table, that's still, it, it's, the town has stepped in. The people of the town, the non-abuting residents of the town have stepped in to defend their neighbors, to defend those of us who are abutters from this unfair and unreasonable plan. Now, it's important, whether we have betterments in this specific project or not, whatever project goes forward in the town, whether there's a Phase 2 or a Phase 3, we owe it to the rest of the town, the people who stepped in, the taxpayers of the town who stepped in to help defend the abutters, we owe it to them to take this power away from the Select Board as sewer commissioners and not let them create victims out of any of our neighbors.
Questions?
Okay. I'll set Mr. Austin? Okay, Mr.?
Does the board have questions for Mr.?
I think, I think that.
The board might have questions.
I think, Mr. Gilberto, I'm going to ask you to do a presentation on what changes are, what changes are being presented in this, because I don't think we heard that. So, I think it's important when we have, we host these informational meetings for people that are attending to know exactly what's being put, put before them for changes.
Folks, can I, everybody hear me okay? No, it can't, can you hear me? Great, just have a few slides to go through. The informational hearing is for the March 6th, 2023 Special Town Meeting, one week from tonight, in the gymnasium in this building. A little bit of background, as the chair indicated, citizen's petition was submitted to the town clerk on February 2nd with 393 signatures. 345 signatures were certified being from registered voters as of February 6th. The board was required to have the town meeting 45 days from the petition being signed. March 6th was selected as a date. We're hearing the informational hearing, which we customarily have leading up to a town meeting vote. The petition would amend the town's general bylaw relative to assessments or betterments back to its pre-June 2022 language, specifically that the town would provide, based on availability of funds, 50% of funds required, the majority vote of abutting property owners based on estimated usage would be required for betterments to be assessed, and that assessments bettered, assessments to bettered properties be the lower of estimates versus actual costs, placing the burden of any shortfall on the town. And again, for recommendations, for those who don't know, the Select Board and the Finance Committee will customarily offer a recommendation to town meeting. Neither board has voted, to my knowledge, for a recommendation at this point in time. Put together just a quick series of questions and answers that I think reflect much of the discussion over the past couple of months. Answers to those questions will follow on the next six slides. So, just, and some of this was gone over two weeks ago in the discussion in this room on the wastewater project that is under consideration, but these, these questions are focused on the betterment bylaw itself. So, the first question, just for everyone to know, can a sewer project be constructed without assessing betterments? And the answer to that question is yes. With town meeting approval, to expend the funds and to borrow as is needed, or if needed, the project can be constructed. The second is, can the Select Board propose a sewer project without having been petitioned by the abutters along the route? The answer is yes, the Select Board can propose such a project. Again, it would need to go through town meeting for approval. The third is, is approval by abutters required for a sewer project to proceed? And the answer to that question is no. The approval by the abutters is not required, but again, many of those abutters are residents, they have a vote that they may cast at a town meeting and would be able to do so when a project was being proposed for approval. Question that has come up is, is there any general law regulating the assessment of betterments? And the answer is yes. Both general law chapters 80 and 83 provide a process and guidelines for a betterment assessment. Our bylaw goes beyond those requirements, yeah, in, in terms of any project that would involve betterments in North Reading. Next question, does the 2023 citizen petition amend the bylaw back to its pre-2022 language, or are there differences between the pre-2022 and 2023 versions? And, you know, both my review, review from a number of folks in town hall and from town council, it appears that the intention and the language would revert back to the pre-2022 language in that bylaw. Next question, under the town's pre-2022 bylaw and/or the 2023 citizen petition proposed bylaw, do non-resident property owners have a vote in the process? For somebody who owns property along the route but does not live in North Reading, do they have a vote in the pre-town meeting process to express whether a betterment is being sought or not? And the answer is no, they do not. They're not a resident, they're not able to cast a vote in that process, nor are they able to cast a vote at a town meeting, which I think most of you know. Under the pre-2022 bylaw or the citizen petition, do residents along the route who are tenants have a vote in the initial neighborhood betterment approval process? The answer to that question is no. If you are a resident along the route, but you do not own the property that you reside in, you do not have a vote in that pre-2022 bylaw slash the 2023 citizen petition, which is pending, at that point in time. The betterment assessed to the property owner, the tenants are not liable, cannot cast a vote in the neighborhood betterment approval process. Again, a tenant, somebody who rents along, who lives along the route and is a registered voter in town, could vote at a town meeting where a project would need to be approved, but not in the pre-town meeting neighborhood approval process that's called for in this proposed revised revision of the bylaw. Next question, under the pre-2022 bylaw and the 2023 petition, which is pending, could a few property owners representing a majority of estimated usage override a majority of residents along the route? And the interpretation we had with town council is that the bylaw can reasonably be interpreted to require the approval of a majority of the property owners residing on a street representing the majority of the estimated usage of public sewer or water mains constructed in that street before betterments can be assessed to property owners abutting the street for the cost of the improvements. Approval of owners representing majority of estimated usage is not sufficient unless those owners are the majority of property owners residing on that street. So, to break that down really quickly, two issues. The amount of wastewater flow, which I think many of you have seen the discussions taking place over the past four or five months on, and then the number of property owners. And it needs to be a majority of both of those. So, a majority of the flow, you know, one property that has a significant amount of water usage that we anticipate would be a significant amount of wastewater usage, that one vote can't override the vote of five other residents, for example, who may have a, an amount of flow that's not the majority, but outnumber that person in terms of the actual votes. So, it's got to cross both thresholds in order for the project to be approved in the process called for in this bylaw. And again, to reiterate for those who don't know, this is a process that would occur generally prior to a town meeting vote. So, before we're at town meeting, which is where we'll be a week from tonight for the Special Town Meeting, before that would happen for a specific project to be approved, for the town to authorize funding for a project to happen, this process would need to take place. Is the pre-2022 bylaw and the 2023 citizen petition proposed bylaw, are they enforceable in light of state law? And the short answer is yes. It's interpreted to be enforceable according to the terms. In the opinion of town council, the terms of the pre-2022 bylaw concern when and what percentage of cost, project cost may be assessed as betterments for sewer and water infrastructure. And a question that's come up, because the word private ways appears in the bylaw, and some of you have caught on and have asked this question. Does this bylaw, the proposed revision, as well as the version prior to June of 2022, apply to sewer projects on public ways? The answer is yes. It's a different section, there is a section that talks about private ways, this is a separate section, both in the petition proposal as well as the pre-June 2022 proposal. Under the town's pre-2022 bylaw and/or the citizen petition proposed bylaw, can the town pay for more or less than 50% of the sewer project cost, or can it assess more or less than 50% of the sewer project cost as betterment if it chooses to do so? The bylaw limits the assessment of betterments in the particular situation set forth, the construction of water sewer mains in a street, to 50% of the project cost, so the assessments are limited at 50%. The town could choose to assess less than 50% of the project cost in the opinion of council, provided that the required number of resident owners approved. Another question that's come up is, under the approved bylaw in June of 2022, so again, we had a town, we had a bylaw in place for a number of years, it was amended at June town meeting, annual town meeting last year, and under that, under this revised bylaw now, which this petition seeks, seeks to revise back, who determines the amount of a project cost to be assessed as betterment? So, under the current, current bylaw, which was put in place at June town meeting last year, it is the selectmen, however, we put provisions in that bylaw that state unless that town meeting could determine a percentage for a particular project in its vote, and we felt that, I think, that was an important provision to have in place, so that town meeting would have an opportunity to specifically determine the percentage. So, that kind of concludes the quick question and answer with regard to the bylaw. Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
That's great, thank you. All right, so we have, I know we have a number of, of people attending and we have a number, we may have a number of questions for the petitioner from the Select Board as well as the people attending, but I just have a quick, quick question for you on that presentation. So, previously, before the town changed to the bylaw, that 50% number, are you saying that the Select Board would have been able to go lower than that, not just have to charge the 50% in assessment?
Madam Chair, do you, could I ask, actually, town council to respond to that question, if it's okay?
Welcome.
I don't know if I'm going to come right up here, John, or go over there.
Yeah, whatever light you want.
Because I'm asking because, and you were, you were there to guide us as well when we reviewed this. I'm asking because my, I know that when we discussed the change, it was to give the leeway on that in, in not to have it have to be the 50%. So, did, so if this reverts back, it, it could be lower than 50%, or does it have to stay at the 50% as the contribute, as the assessment?
Yeah, Madam Chair, so it can be lower than 50%, but the, the way this, the pre, the way the reversion bylaw would work is it requires the approval of a majority owners with a majority flow on that street for the town to assess betterments at all. So, if you're going to assess, and the maximum that they can be assessed is 50%, but if they want to agree that the town will pay, for instance, more than 50%, they can do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have questions? Do we have any, Mr. Studo?
I just want clarification on, because it was interesting, and I know this was a little bit of a concern, so a, you said a tenant on the route, so Edgewood comes to mind, but again, you know, you could have someone either rents out their condo or home or whatever, and I don't know if this applies to the commercial space, if, you know, I own a building, but lease it out to the UPS store. But, so, under the old bylaw, and I know we had a little bit of concern when we talked about it in June, but we can affirm that pretty much everybody, for example, Edgewood, would not have a vote on the, you know, the pre-town meeting part of it, if you're renting, meaning even if you're a registered voter in North Reading and you can vote for everything else, you would not have a vote for that, all those units, because there's a lot. I don't know exactly how many, but I, there's a lot.
406.
So, all of a sudden, I'm just saying that pre-bylaw, if we reverted back, their vote's gone. If they're not owners. So, if you're renting, okay, I just wanted to.
Madam Chair, do, just to make clear, so again, in the pre-town meeting abutter approval process, the tenants would not have a vote, because they are not property owners.
Correct.
They would have a vote. They would have a vote at the town meeting.
For the project, whatever, water or sewer project.
But again, for that one, for that specific, if you're renting, pretty much it's, you just, you're at the, I don't want to say mercy, but you just, you don't get that vote. Now, the property management company, if the, theoretically the owner, if there was like an owner of a smaller, like multifamily home and he lived there, would, they would get a vote?
That'd be good, yes.
So the property owner obviously gets the vote in the town, but it does say that the votes that count are the resident owners on the street. So if the owner doesn't live there, that's not one of the votes that's going to be counted in determining whether the board can assess betterments for that street. And just to be clear, this bylaw, as best interpreted, I think, is a limitation on the use of betterments, street by street. That's what it does.
And then just a follow-up to it.
I have Mr. Sudo.
And on the usage calculation, if, if a condo association, and again, we had this discussion before, HOAs have their own rules, but if a condo association voted either yes or no, is that one solitary vote for the entire condo? Or does each condo get a vote? Because the usage, my understanding, on a condo is one big water bill.
Yes, it can be, yeah, you can get, you can meter it as one bill, but because it's going to be assessed to individual owners, they're going to have individual units. I think you need the votes of the individual unit owners.
Okay.
Just assess it to the...
Well, that's good. So it wouldn't be one, no one would get overridden.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Any other, okay, Mrs. Gonzalez?
So just to follow up on that and clarify, how, how is it different with the, with the bylaw change? With the bylaw change, do those tenants get to have a vote in the pre?
With the bylaw as it is now...
Right.
There is no process for residents on a street to say yes or no.
Okay.
The betterments. The only process that they can do that by is by going to town meeting and asking as part of the financing warrant article to say, the limitation on betterments is X percentage, and that would have to be voted by town meeting. That's the process by which you would limit betterments at that point.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? We have a lot of people in attendance. If, if you have a question, if you could come to the podium, and if you can't come to the podium, just raise your hand, because we'll have a microphone that you can ask a question. And if there's anybody joining online, if you could, I guess, raise your, raise your, raise your chat, or raise your, raise your hand, and we'll, hopefully we'll see that too. Does anybody that's in attendance have a question or want to, no? Do you, do you want to come to the podium or do you want a microphone?
I just have a microphone here.
All right. Thanks, thank you, Mrs.
I have a question or one...
That's me, so.
No?
You need another one, another microphone too for Norcan. One second, Paul.
We're going to give...
You'll have two, you're going to talk to both, Mr. Darrow.
I need two mics.
Jeff, back to work.
You need both.
Oh, both of them, okay. Hello, Paul DeNero, 402 Park Street, North Reading. Can you hear me? Okay.
Keep that one down and hold the one in your hand a little closer to you, Mike. One's for the team, one's for Norcan.
Just talk, listen to DeNero.
That's for Norcan.
You're fine.
We can hear you though.
This is, this is above my pay grade. I know my employees used to say that to me all the time, now I got a chance to say it. First, first of all, I got two questions. One, I want to compliment the town meeting for, for sending out the notices and putting things in the transcript, you know, emails and everything else. It's, I don't know if that's a different protocol for this meeting, but will that continue for future, future notices?
For the other town, you mean the other water, the proposed...
Or anything.
Other town meetings, yeah.
Oh, town meetings always get published.
This is normal protocol.
Yes, town meetings always get published.
Okay, because that's a way, it makes sense, because we could find it, it's right there. So anyway, good job. Sir, I don't know your name, but anyway, I would like you to explain, give an example of, of the, the water usage, you know, majority of the water uses and how, how that comes into play. I just couldn't, couldn't understand what those words meant.
Sure. I will try to give a very simple explanation, because we're talking about hundreds of thousands of gallons of wastewater and water. But if we were only talking about five gallons, and we were talking about, let's say, two houses, that's a bad number. Let's say we're talking about five houses and 10 gallons, 10 gallons, right? Five houses, 10 gallons. So you would think, oh, well, each of them is using two gallons each. So you need to have three of the houses say yes, so that's three of the five, it's a majority, and it's six of the 10 gallons. Follow me there?
I do.
So that's a straightforward answer. But what if they weren't the same number? What if the properties had different amounts? What if one property was nine gallons of those 10 gallons, and the other four properties represented a total of one gallon? The question becomes, well, what happens in that vote? And what town council has said is, yeah, that one property owner with nine gallons worth of wastewater flow can vote yes in the meeting, before town meeting, for a, a betterment to be assessed. And yes, that one owner, he or she would represent nine gallons out of the 10, but it's not a majority of the five owners.
That makes sense. Now, one other clarification. You're talking about non-abutters being able to vote against the abutters. Is that what this, what this link was about?
Through you, Madam Chair, no. The, the betterment bylaw, the proposed citizen's petition, which happens to change the bylaw back to what it used to be from, I think, 2003 until 2022, that deals with a, having a special process that would allow abutters the ability to cast a vote in which a majority of the property owners representing a majority of that water flow would need to say, yes, we wish to be assessed a betterment. That step needs to happen before a betterment could be assessed, even if town meeting approved it separately. Under the proposed bylaw, that step would have to happen. So it's not a matter of... There is an issue with regard to non-abutters having a vote. Those non-abutters are, they're coming to a town meeting, and that has to happen in any scenario. I wonder whether you're asking about property owners who don't live along the route.
No, no, I'm specifically asking about your mentioning that people who live on, it sounded to me like you're talking about people who live on a side street to the main street would have a say in the, in the vote by abutters. So they could be a certain volume and a certain, you know, two criteria that would make them eligible to have a vote, and it could, and I was, it sounded to me like they, it could contest the vote of the abutters.
So I think what we're trying to identify and what town council identified is, under the, the bylaw, the bylaw proposed in the citizen's petition, we don't take all of the properties along Main Street, Concord Street, and the portions of North Street, Lowell Road, and Park Street, aggregate them together and take these votes. The way it's written, it happens street by street. So there would be one street, one vote on Main Street, one vote on Concord Street, a separate vote for the portion of Park Street, and another vote for the portion of North Street, a fifth vote for the portion of Lowell Road. So it isn't, they aren't all aggregated together. They happen, because it states by street, it would be five separate votes for the particular project that we're talking about.
So you're saying that the side street could have two votes and could counter the one vote of Main Street?
No. They, they might, the, the side streets, they're not voting against the Main Street. They're voting on their own street, having a wastewater pipe put in the ground. Practically, if the folks on Main Street voted against it, it would be probably very difficult to do the project if the folks on Park Street and North, North Street voted yes. They'd have to get the pipe there.
Well, I spoke to Mr. O'Leary at least twice about, are you going to continue, besides Main Streets and bring the, the mains down, streets like the street across from me, Southwick Road, and, and these other streets? And you said there was no plans of doing that, correct?
Correct.
So is, is that, is impossible, right?
So a couple of things. There is, I mean, full disclosure, the slides we went through in the fall had a phase two. It was Martin's Pond. And we indicated that it was not part of the discussion for financing this project, it was for a later point in time.
But has, has the engineers priced up a, a close proposal of what that stage two would cost?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Mr. O'Leary?
It's a very large waving...
Excuse, excuse me.
Large waving, not large.
Excuse me, if we could just stay, staying on to that topic, I also think it's important for people in attendance for this hearing to know, this, this is not just about sewer, it's about any water improvement project, for example. So I know your questions are pointedly directed to the streets where the sewer project is proposed, but you're, you're asking about scenarios which may, could possibly happen with, let's say, a water improvement project down several, you know, main corridor and several side streets, that all of those side streets could have a, could have a vote if there was an assessment component to that project.
Specifically, what I was, what I was concerned about is, how can I vote for a sewer project for phase one and have no knowledge of being a towns person of what the cost would be for phase two? So would, would the town come to me and said, thank you for paying your phase one, $46,000, whatever it might be, we're doing phase two now, and we need your help as well? And so, and so, you know, how, how, how is it reasonable for abutters in this case to vote for any cost, whether it even seems reasonable, unless you know if the other shoe is going to drop, if your name is going to be on the sole of that shoe?
I think I understand your question, but I think in terms of what we're talking about this evening, that vote, that vote would be taken at a town meeting on a proposed project by everybody that's registered and attends a town meeting. But I think what we're, what we're reviewing is the petition on shifting the percentage of payment in a separate thing that would only be occurring for a specifically proposed water or sewer project on a specific street. So that's what Mr. Gilberto explained would be, prior to even going to the town meeting to vote on an entire project, if there's an assessment component to a water or sewer project, that vote basically would be taken prior to that, to that town meeting. But we are, we can't really, we didn't, we're not really, we're really mixing two different things where...
Well, I'm looking for full disclosure, actually. And, you know, do we as townspeople, can we look at your notes and see what you've discussed with the consultants and see, you know, what the, what the thought process is? I mean, it's very germane to what we're speaking about. There's no, there's no disconnect.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't actually know how to answer your question, because we're not really talking about other phases of it.
It's quite simple what you're asking. It's, you're asking what type of monies we're talking about for phase two.
We're not even talking about the sewer project here. We're talking about...
No, we're talking about turning it back to June 2022. We, I understand that.
Right. So we can't, we have to...
There's a reason for that, because, because we oppose, I oppose being, being told that I'm going to have to pay $46,000. And I know that my neighbor down the street, a 75-year-old couple, they're going to have to pay $75,000 too. And so I think it's unreasonable and it's unfair. Now, I think that the whole town should at some point get sewer. If half the town's going to get sewer, why don't they get it? I mean, obviously, if they're going to vote for it, they want it, but, you know, maybe, maybe you say, hey, listen, don't worry, we're not going to come after you until 10 years from now, it's going to take five years to get this thing done, we'll come to that then, and then we'll have money, the town will raise money from the state and federal government, that'll pay for all the rest of the sewer. So, so the, the abutters will pay the down payment. And I asked Mr. O'Leary, I said, if you get money from the state, because I read somewhere on the Mass, Massachusetts General Laws or something, that, that the state could pay up to 80% of, of the cost in, in order to take the septic tanks out of the, out of the ground and make the North Reading safer. And so, I forget where I was going with this, but, but anyway...
Okay. I, I think though, what, for what we're talking about, the abutters, I think, I think what we're talking about is, before it even gets to who's paying what, there would be this vote of the abutters prior to, that's what we're talking about here.
But we took that away, because they didn't want any, any contest. And so we're trying to put that back, I understand that, that's why we're here tonight, but we also want to know what phase two is going to cost, who's going to pay for it? You know, and, and why can't, if you get money from the state, why can't you cover some of the costs of the, the abutters would, would have paid?
Okay. All right. Do you have, okay, I guess we need to really move on to other, other, does any, do you have anyone?
Thank you.
If we want to, if we want, Mr., I don't know if Mr. Sudo, do you have, did you want to comment as well? Did you want to comment? No? Mr., Mr. Sudo?
Just on that, it's more, it's just more on...
I think Mr. Sudo may be trying to help too in terms of responding.
The best way, just in order to explain it, is that it would be impossible to give estimates on every what-if that the town could be. What if we have to redo the little school? What if tomorrow there's an emergency? What if eventually the middle school's going to have to be redone in 30 years? Meaning that based on that, we would have to what-if every conceivable project that the town could have.
Excuse me, sir.
Well, what I'm just trying to say, Mr. O'Leary, the, the reason...
Let's just let people answer, please.
The reason that it's, in any setting, it is difficult to answer, is because there's no guarantee first of a future project, but that's almost like saying, we can't redo a school because I need to know what the next school would cost to even look at this school.
How can you, how can you, how can you start a building? We're going to put the front door and we're not going to put the side door, because we don't have the price of that.
Madam Chair.
Do we, Mr., we're going to pass the mic down. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr., Mr. O'Leary?
Let me try and, maybe it's working, maybe it's not. I don't think it's, I think this one's dead. Anyway, let me try and speak loud enough here. Let me try and get us focused on really what we're talking about and what's being proposed. Paul, if you... So let's try and focus really on what we're discussing tonight, and it'll dovetail in with, with the proposed project. What we're talking about tonight is reverting back the bylaw that was changed in June. And as you can see, as we're discussing this, the process under the old bylaw to take on, undertake a major project through several neighborhoods required a significant amount of hoops to go through before you could even determine what would be presented to town meeting. Keep in mind that the bylaw, when it was written and even previous to that, there was no wastewater project likelihood in the town in North Reading, ever. The reference to wastewater and sewerage in the bylaw was like a catch-all, let's throw everything in, into the bylaw to forecast whatever could possibly take place in the town in North Reading in the foreseeable future. Wastewater was not on the radar screen. Wastewater was not on the radar screen. Forward twenty years now, there's an opportunity that's presented to the community. As we were looking at this opportunity, we're saying, okay, what do we have to do to get this approved? Here's the bylaw that we have to deal with. We went, this is rather onerous. You have to go neighborhood by neighborhood, abutter by abutter, property owner by property owner. Tenants and commercial property tenants and residential tenants are excluded. It didn't work. It doesn't work. It didn't make sense. It was too onerous of a process to go through, so we came up with a proposal and presented to town meeting last June to say, let's put it in the hands of town meeting and let's decide how it's going to be done and how it's going to be financed. So as you can see through this discussion, the process which was in place prior to last June, extremely onerous to undertake a major construction project, utility infrastructure project. It just didn't, didn't work well. Doesn't work. So the proposal that we brought to town meeting last June addressed that. And in that proposal, we said, who should have control in determining how people were going to be treated? And we determined the best place for that to happen is town meeting, not here. Town meeting. Town meeting will determine benefits or privilege fees. Town meeting can determine what percentage benefits. No cap, not a fifty percent town share, because if you're going to do a smaller project, forget the big project, a smaller project that's being requested by an individual neighborhood, you know, maybe those neighbors should be absorbing more of the cost, more than fifty percent, rather than the taxpayers as a whole. And we've had proposals in neighborhoods in this community where they've asked for us to go out there and put water in and put other infrastructure in and are willing to pay for it. And the old bylaw didn't allow us to do it unless the town, meaning every taxpayer, shared fifty percent. So even on the smaller projects, it was an onerous process to go through. And we haven't had a lot of these happen. Most of them happened on private ways and private streets over the years that I've been involved. So it just didn't, it didn't make a lot of practical sense or financial sense the way that it was written, and that's what we came to town meeting with last June. So that's what we brought to town meeting. And as you can see through this discussion, it just doesn't work. And that's why, you know, and I understand, I understand why the genesis of this proposal, you know, it's coming out of the frustration and concern that was raised in relation to the discussion of a proposed project which was not put forth specifically and in total to the community for their consideration. As I have said at public meetings, we were doing our mind wrestling in public. We were looking for the input. We were looking for the feedback, and we got it. And that's good. This is exactly what we were looking for. So reverting back to what we had prior to, [BLEEP], to me personally, doesn't make a lot of financial sense or economic sense.
Do I need to recess?
You know, so.
I think so.
But again, town meeting's gonna, this board did not.
Excuse me. Excuse me. We're gonna take a brief recess. Excuse me. We'll give it, hold that thought. We're gonna take a brief recess. We're sorry. There's some offensive comments going on with the people joining the meeting, so we want to give Mr. Gilberto a chance to root that out. So hold the thought, please.
I really think we have it addressed.
So again, what we were looking for, again, was to get the input.
So we're back, we're back, please. And then after Mr. O'Leary, then we'll go back to you.
All right. So again, what we were looking for was an opportunity, provide the community with an opportunity for open discussion and the ability to change any proposal as we were proposed. We gave a proposal as a starting point. What's your, what do you think? And it was evolving, and it has evolved. It continues to evolve. And whatever we would come up with, and we still haven't finalized it, we'll go to town meeting, and town meeting will determine whether they like it or they don't like it or can even modify it at town meeting. The current bylaw, as it sits, allows town meeting to amend whatever proposal is put forward and betterment, no betterment, ten percent, twenty percent, hundred percent, twenty-two point three percent. They can do what they want and what they think is fair for everybody in the entire community as a whole. What's in the community's best interest, not just the individuals in the neighborhoods. But, and again, there was and there is and there continues to be a significant amount of concern and a significant amount of compassion and recognition as to director abutters and betterments. We heard that from everybody across the town, those who are going to be directly affected and those who were not. And that's being addressed. The proposed changes here takes that out, takes that opportunity away to do that, to come to a consensus, to move this community forward on not just this project, any future project. Again, as we looked at this, and this is the first major infrastructure project in the thirty years, thirty-some years I've been sitting on this board, where that bylaw would be implemented, would have been implemented. And as we took a look at it and as the opportunity presented itself, we went, phew, this doesn't make any sense. So let's put the authority where it belongs, and that's with town meeting. So I understand the genesis of this whole thing and the frustration that came out of it. I get it. But what's being proposed may not be the best fit or fix for what your frustration is going to do because, you know, if we have to do this piecemeal, and if Lowell Row says no, and Main Street says yes, and section of Park Street says no, how do you move forward? Not just with this proposed project, which, again, we haven't even finalized it or put forth with consideration yet, but any future project. How do we move forward and how do we address the needs and concerns of the infrastructure of this community the way that the previous bylaw was written? It doesn't work well, and that's why you have the proposed, that's why we have a current bylaw in place. So I get it. Hopefully, that helps us focus a little bit more. You can draw some comparisons or relationships to the current project if you want to, if that helps you. But from a practical standpoint, we're talking about changing a general bylaw for the town of North Reading. Every project, every infrastructure project moving forward, how can we proceed and get the work done for the betterment of the community? The old bylaw didn't work. Doesn't work. Current one does. And there are other mechanisms to safeguard community members in neighborhoods, and that's to mobilize town meeting, get people to come to town meeting and vote. And that's easily done. It's easily done.
Sure. Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. We need a recess. I'm sorry. Hold that thought. We having some problem.
It'll be a couple of minutes.
We're gonna take a quick recess. We'll come right back to you as soon as we're back in.
To the meeting, we're having some issues via Zoom. We apologize for the offensive video and offensive comments that you heard. We're trying to correct that. We also apologize to our attendee, Mr. De Naro here, who now has twice been interrupted by this immature behavior and offensive behavior. We're trying to troubleshoot that. So if it happens again, we just have to recess. This is the joys of conducting meetings that are hybrids like this via Zoom. So we apologize.
Quick finish.
Go ahead, Mr. De Naro. I can't, sorry.
I just would hope that we could all be in the same boat and on the same page. And I don't feel that that is happening. And the reason is your own words from the first meeting and a couple of times in different meetings is that the wastewater system is an opportunity for the town to bring more money in. Because you mentioned it the last either one or two meetings ago, that the town is at its brink. It needs more funds to be able to maintain buildings and roads and everything else. And there's a whole list of things in the town webpage that says, you know, what do you wish you had done better? And, you know, the roads, this and that and everything else. So there's a list of things that need capital for. And so when I say we're not on the same page, you don't wake up and have the same purpose every day. And that bothers me because I want to be part of the town. I don't want to be the negative person. But I have to, I have to speak out because a lot of people don't want to speak out. They have something to say. And so I'm saying it. Hopefully, hopefully, it's what somebody else wants to hear. So the only thing that I'm saying is, again, want to be on the same boat. We, you know, I ran a business for 38 years. I had 20 employees. I understand every day there's fires and everything else. So when you hire consultants and you're doing a project like this, it just makes sense that you know what it's going to cost down the road. You know the end game. You know, I just can't buy the fact that you never even asked. I mean, I'm not even going to go there. I don't accept it. And so I want full disclosure from the town. And if you've worked on something, even if it's halfway through, oh, we looked at that and we got there, it was too much money. We'll take it up later, fine. But if I had been asked to pay $130 million or even the just the abutters amount with the $46,000, $37,000, $87,000, that came to $58 million for like 200 homes. I mean, that's an outrageous amount of money. And you said yourself tonight that when you looked at this, it was onerous. You know, you looked at it for the town, owners for the town to pay that kind of money. So what'd you do? You picked up, it was like you found a gun on the ground, you pick up the wrong end of it. You go, oh, this is pretty onerous. You turn around and you saw everyone else jump back to things. Oh, this is pretty neat. And so you've got the town on the run. You changed the bylaws and everything else. We're scared crazy. I'm retired. I'm fixed income now. I don't, you know, I don't have $46,000. I mean, I have it, but it's not for that purpose. And so I want to be on the same page. I want to help you. I want to help the town. I want us to work together. We all have to have the same purpose. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Yule?
I don't know if I can do this right, but Madam Chair, Jeff Yule, 427 Park Street. The bylaw was changed, I'm guessing, to make it more easy for the process of implementing the sewer system in the town. Through all the steps that you have to go through and so on, the hoops that you're talking about. So you changed the bylaw to make it easier and easier processes. Is that correct? Is that a safe assessment?
I'm not, I don't know how to even answer that.
And again, this isn't just specific to sewer projects.
No, 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 I'm getting to a point.
Jeff, you know as well as anybody, this is a general bylaw. So again, as we looked at it, there hasn't been, you were on the board for a number of years, there weren't any major projects which triggered this bylaw.
That's not my question, Steve. I'm sorry.
Oh, that I missed. What is your question?
You went through a process to change the bylaw for a reason. I guess I'm asking you, what is that reason?
I can, I'll just say it's flexibility. Just to get the flexibility to be able to, as the feedback came in, we weren't locked into a particular route. We could hear the feedback and change to adapt to what people are looking for. At the end of the day, you know, we're looking for success, not for failure. So through the feedback that people have given, they've changed. I'm not on the working committee, but they've changed.
You answered my question.
They've adapted. And I think the last proposal, I think, was much more palatable to most people. I haven't heard a lot of complaints about that. So it gave us the flexibility to be able to change the program as we got feedback. Because it's like what you said.
To bring the town meeting.
To bring the town meeting. At the end of the day, it's up to the entire town of voters. If we bring forward a bad proposal, whatever that is, and you don't like it, it's going to be voted down and it's not going to happen. And then we either decide to never do it again, or we come back with a new proposal. But the whole point of the original introductory meetings was to come out with the first plan, to include betterment as part of that process, heard the feedback with the flexibility that the bylaw allowed us to do, able to change it and adapt to a better proposal, which I think the second proposal, I think everybody would agree, the second proposal was much more palatable to what we believe most of the town would agree to. So it's flexibility. That's why the bylaw was created, flexibility for this particular project and for future projects like it.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, a follow-up question. I have a question for the petitioner, if I, yeah, is that there's a reason why you wanted to go back to the bylaw as it was. And it's my guess that it's for the, for lack of a better word, protection of the, for the abutters. I'd like to know from you what you think will, how going back to the old bylaw will benefit and protect the abutters.
Yes, thanks for the question. I'd like to be clear. I don't think that reverting to the old bylaw is going to take the vote away from town meeting. Just the contrary. We're still going to have, the process will still have to go through town meeting. It'll have to have town meeting approval. But reverting to the old bylaw puts a defense back in the hands of abutters. You know, like the selectman said earlier, the select board members stated earlier, there are several projects that people in the town would support and want, you know, if there's a road that wants, you know, this, some sort of infrastructure added, they could vote to accept a betterment. They could be, you know, happily pay for it. And that's the way, even after the bylaw change, there's no difference in water projects or non-public roads. All of that stays just the same. It's untouched. And that's handled the same way as reverting the bylaw on sewer would be handled. The bylaw stood for many years. Many water projects went in under that bylaw, the exact words. What it added was a defense for abutters. When something is clearly unfair to abutters, they could vote it down. It was easier for abutters to basically have a veto vote. If something is extremely unfair and it doesn't have value for money for the abutters, they would have the chance to go have their own special vote to accept or not the betterment. So if it's really, you know, we've been told that this should improve property values along the route. And that's certainly true for commercial properties, but it certainly isn't true for condominiums. The FXM report that we have shows that condominium values tank with sewer projects like this. So for abutters, it gave them the opportunity to veto a project that is against their interest. So assuming a project is structured in a way that's fair, that brings value, that's worthwhile, the abutters would vote for it, say, yeah, absolutely. This is going to increase my property value. I'll vote for it. And then it passes on to town meeting. And then it goes on for the special election. So this just adds a step. It adds one step, which is protection for abutters against extreme projects like the first proposal that we saw. We've heard a couple of other options for other proposals, and they may or may not be fair. They may or may not be great projects. But it takes off the table unreasonable assessments against the abutters.
All set? Yeah? Mr. Studo.
I just have a follow-up on that.
Thanks, Mr. Yule. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Yule, were you all set?
No, I'm finished.
All right, thank you.
Just to piggyback. So I'd just like to get your opinion, you know, on any concern that under the old bylaw tenants lose their right for that? And the only reason is this, because I agree with you. It's a cost thing, right? So you should have, it would be a concern. However, we heard at the last meeting from some that, from some that do, they're registered voters, but they rent, that their fear is that sewer goes through and a property management company raises their costs. So the question becomes, under the old bylaw, they would not get a say in that. And again, I'm not saying that the abutters would vote yes, but if a project did make sense, abutters could pretty much vote that in, it goes through. And then as a rentor, you could theoretically see your costs go up and you don't even get a say. So I just, I just want your opinion on that because I know you're very involved with it.
Yeah, so my opinion on that is basically, I would prefer that renters also had the vote. But by reverting the bylaw, it's fair. It brings us back to where we were before, where we are in water projects. And basically, the two options here is we can revert to the old bylaw and owners along the route get a vote, or we stick with the current bylaw and no one gets a vote. Because it doesn't change the requirement for town meeting or special election. It just adds one additional protection. So would, is it possible to come up with a better bylaw? Absolutely. Do I claim that this is a perfect bylaw? No. But I think that it's fair and reasonable to go back to what we had previously rather than try and create something new. We've seen that something new has been created. It clearly doesn't work. It's not fair. It's not reasonable. And so reverting to the old bylaw at least reestablishes protections. And there's nothing that says in a few years, another project is developed, maybe the bylaw gets changed again. But currently, you know, the difference between the two, the two options that you're talking about are fortunately renters along the route do not get to vote, or nobody along the route gets to vote before the special, before the overall town vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez, I'm going to go to you, Mr. Yule again. Mrs. Gonzalez.
I just feel I need to clarify, you know, Mr. Austin keeps saying what the plan was unfair and unreasonable, but that plan is no longer there. It has been changed by the working group, so.
It was never presented.
It was never presented. What it was, was giving the opportunity for people to give feedback so that something could be presented. So the original plan that was put out there was, the feedback was given. It was brought back to the working group who brought back something else that still gets to get voted at town meeting. We don't make that decision. It was just to get something palatable for people. So to say that it was unreasonable is untrue because it's, that was changed. We were looking for feedback and that feedback was taken to the working group and changed. So I just want to clarify that.
And I just want to really direct focus here to what we're here on, which is the bylaw change. Because I wouldn't want people to think going to this meeting is actually a vote on any proposed project. And not, so we really have to be clear about, you know, just directing it to the petitioner to explain these answers, which I think he's doing a great job explaining, the questions that we do have to ask on the rationale behind it. But let's just be clear about this bylaw change is something totally different than the proposed, the proposed sewer project. So let's, we just want to make sure that there's clarity with regards to that. We're kind of confusing the two. Thank you, Mr. Yule. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, if this warrant article were to pass at town meeting, so thank you. If this warrant article were to pass at town meeting, it would then have to be sent to the state to be approved. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is there a possibility that the state would not approve it? Being that we just went back, it's like going back and forth.
Oh, you mean time-wise.
Time-wise.
I mean, the prior one was approved, so.
Right.
I don't know why they wouldn't have an issue.
Is there a restriction on time, for example, that if you, if a bylaw is changed, you have to wait five years or something like that to change it back?
No, and I had the same exact question. And Attorney Eichmann confirmed, no. I had the same, I thought within the year, it seems like it was so close. But no, not with the bylaw change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
All right. Mr. Kelleher. Thanks, Mr. Yule.
A couple of comments and questions. And this one closer?
You got to turn it on, there's a switch.
Thanks, Jeff. He gave me a dead microphone, but what else? My understanding, the original bylaws before the change was made last June dealt with two subject matters. One was roads on unaccepted streets and water projects, again, on unaccepted streets, that the homeowners on those streets wanted the town to provide either a street that they didn't have or water that they weren't getting access to. And the bylaw was written the way they're written so that the individuals that were asking for it, the petitioners, would have to vote among themselves in order to request it and agree to pay for it to the limits that were in the bylaw. Mr. O'Leary's point, I think, on a major water project or a major wastewater project, not water, but a wastewater project, is that if we are under the old bylaws, that every street has got a vote to accept it. And you talk about phase two. Well, phase two is perhaps Martin's Pond, but that's not all of the town. So if you think about doing a sewerage for the entire town, now you've got, I don't know how many streets and roads that we have in this town, but I expect that then we would have to get every road, the property owners on those roads to want to do it and are willing to pay for it. Okay? So I think that's the major distinction between what we currently have, which are kind of one-offs, and a town-wide project. So I think that was, I, as I understand it, the impetus for the addition of sewer, because that was not in the old bylaw. The bylaws, the old bylaw was water supply and, I believe, roads. So we didn't even have sewer considered in here. Now the question. When I read these things and you talk about equity, and I don't know why, when we were writing this a year ago, or you were writing it, we left in the language about, number one, the 50%, and number two, the lesser of, the estimate at the time the project is accepted or the cost of the project is all of the abutters are going to pay. And recognizing even in the bylaw that these may take many years between acceptance and fruition where it is actually done, it seems it sets the town up for picking up the, any shortfall. So I mean, I think there, I think this problem with the original bylaw with that, in that respect, that if the residents of a street want road built on an unaccepted way, or they want water brought down, they ought to be paying for it. And the rest of the taxpayers shouldn't be paying for it. That's separate from what we're discussing tonight. But if you revert and get rid of the section on sewer betterments and try to incorporate it into the bylaw by putting it into public water supply by adding sewers to it, and you've got this 50% or the lesser of, I have no idea what it's going to cost the rest of the taxpayers.
Yeah.
Because undoubtedly, before this is finished, it's going to go up. And even if your estimate is a good estimate, there's a risk there that it's going to cost more. But the abutters are going to be held harmless and the rest of the taxpayers are going to pay more. I just think that there are issues in this that we probably ought to address either, I don't know if now is the time or at another town meeting, just to look at the bylaw by itself. But I think breaking out the sewers because of the approval process of the street by street by street by street, and think about this, maybe not sewers, but some other thing that we want to do in town, it would just be probably next to impossible to manage the project. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you. I can only, I know, I knew you were around too when we were entertaining the citizen's petition on Swan Pond.
Yeah.
And I had that same question in regard to the percentage and why we fix it at that amount. And the engineer did explain that at the time, that the residents who are voting on, this was on the private way, the private way Swan Pond paving, they had to have a fixed amount so that they could go and collect that. So we had to, we had to, we had to have an amount. And it was the best estimate at that moment of time where they had the majority of the residents. And as you know, that didn't go through because they didn't have one or two, I think.
One abutter.
One abutter in the middle of the road that would not agree. So we couldn't stop the pavement, then start the pavement. And the cost of the, to the town to doing that didn't make financial sense. But I remember the same question, and it was because you, the residents had to go back with that fixed amount. And so that's why that, that's why I understood that cap to be whatever the evaluation was at the time that it was made so that the abutters could go back and say, and then the town would just, the town would just cover the difference if it was like a year later or that one went on for, still, it didn't finish, but the town meeting approved that to be paved. But that was a fixed amount. So that's still going to be that amount and whatever the And whatever the difference is now, if they end up ever getting every abut, we're going to absorb, the town absorbs the cost of it because town meeting said yes to it. So, I know what you're saying, but I think at the time, that fixed amount, that estimate at the time was necessary to go to the abutters and say, this is how much your contribution is. But I know what you're saying. It doesn't make a lot of sense because it fluctuates, so. Mrs. Hurl, but.
Kate, you're right. I understand what you're saying, and I certainly remember the Swan Pond paving project. But that was a short-term project and it wasn't mega bucks.
Yeah.
This is the largest single financial project this town has ever done. We don't get reimbursement from the state as we did as part of the cost of the school. And this project is probably not going to be completed for five years. So, the possibility of those costs for construction increasing during that period of time, and it's not just the town that's picking up the overage, it's the taxpayers. And so, in this particular, with a long-term, very expensive project like this, it's really an issue. And I don't know if we can do anything about it or not. But I think that we should certainly give consideration to that.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions? Mr. De Niro. Sure.
One thing I'd like to say on one of the questions. You said that it would take a long time to get the pricing on, let's say, a Phase Three. Because all the streets, I think I read somewhere there's 90 miles of streets in North Reading. But I think if we took one street, like Southwick Street or any street, and you took another one, Tower Road, and you just figured out what the cost of that street was, how many houses were on that street, and just use that as examples, say, well, the average price of going in and take, and side streets, and maybe five side streets, you multiply it times five times. So, you come close, it wouldn't be exact, but at least it would be something that the townspeople could say, okay, Phase Three and Phase Four is going to cost this much. What does the town have any plans or who would pay for that? Would the town be able to get the funds to pay for that? So, that's just small information that I think I would need to know. I mean, as a former business owner, I want to get all the information. You know, it just makes sense, you're going to put money into something.
Okay. Thank you. I think you had the last comment because I don't see any other hands raised. So, if there's no other comment or question, all set? Okay. So, we're going to close the public, thank you, Mr. Yul. We're going to close the public comment portion. And we also just want to remind everybody to please come to the special town meeting, March 6th. It's here. The warrant in the mail, it's this single, it's a single article. We'll have other meetings on the sewer project that include informational meetings. And we're going to also try to discuss it throughout the course of our meetings here. So, if you want to attend these and ask questions, I know we've seen a lot of you attend these. It's really important for us to help formulate what we're going to make a recommendation on that people are here and give us public comment on all of the aspects of this, including the bylaw change. So, thank you. We appreciate your attendance for this. And I think we're actually going to, I think we're actually going to talk about, we're going to talk about the wastewater discussion in a little bit, if you want to stick around. So, all right. And so, if we want to, we're going to close that portion. I don't know that we have a, do we have a motion yet? Are we going to make a motion? Do we want to have any further discussion? Are we all set? What's your motion, Mr. Wallner?
For whether we want to recommend or not recommend or wait till.
Recommend at town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. I think it's.
Okay.
I mean, we can discuss our prerogative, but I think we would tip, it's not our petition. It's not the board's petition. So, we would basically want to do the, what we typically would. We don't have any other recommendations at the moment either. But so, recommend at town meeting is that, the general consensus would be that. All right. So, do we have a motion?
Hey, Madam Chair. I move to recommend at special town meeting, citizens petition to amend code of North Reading, general bylaws, chapter 25, assessments.
To make a recommendation.
Sorry. Repeat that again. Thank you.
Do we, do we have the motion?
Sorry, sorry.
Okay.
Let's start again. Madam Chair, I move to make a, make a recommendation at special town meeting for the citizens petition to amend code of North Reading, general bylaws, chapter 25, assessments.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Manu Pelli is aye. It's March 6th here, special town meeting, but it's in the gymnasium where we typically have town meetings indoors at 7:00 PM. So.
Quorum is required.
Quorum is required, yes. Quorum is required for the vote.
150 residents.
That quorum is 150 residents. Okay? All right. And then we also, Mr. De Niro mentioned too, and I'm going to take this opportunity to advertise again, we have several informational now. This is shift off the bylaw, this is on the proposal, the sewer proposal. There'll be another informational meeting here, Q and A meeting, getting questions about the proposed sewer project. That's going to be here in this room, 7:00 PM on March 8th. And then another virtual Zoom meeting, Zoom hearing, Q and A on the proposed sewer project, April 5th, 2023. And then another meeting here in the distance learning lab, April 12th, 2023, 7:00 PM, same Q and A. And we just cannot, the select board, and I'll speak on behalf of the select board, can't really express enough how important it is for us as we're shaping the proposal for a town meeting to be able to get the feedback of the citizens in terms of what works and what doesn't. And as I think some of my colleagues mentioned, going back to the drawing board, given the feedback that was, has been presented to us. So, we're, you know, we're not you versus us. We're five voters on the town meeting floor as well. We're just trying to hear what the citizens and the residents have to say about the proposal and then trying to incorporate that into what we're trying to recommend to the town at the town meeting. So, our feedback is greatly appreciated and welcome, and we need it to be able to do what is in the best interest of the town here. So, thank you for attending this. And hopefully, we'll see some more and field some more questions and get some more comments too on this. All right. So, we're going to move forward to our next, we took a vote on that. We'll move forward on our next, which is wastewater discussion. So, keeping it going on. It's because I didn't, I don't have my glasses on, so I should put them on. I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. O'Leary. Did I skip something?
I would just like the minutes to show that I will be recusing myself this evening from any discussion or deliberations on the wastewater discussion at this particular point in time. And I will be recusing myself and removing myself to the audience portion of the room here.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary is recused. Okay. Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you, this item was put on the agenda to provide an opportunity for further discussion amongst the select board, to the extent that it might wish to have that discussion. I do have the ability to go through the presentation from the last meeting, but I'm not doing so, more providing it for the board to have its discussion.
Sure.
And also, I thank you for highlighting the dates of the upcoming information sessions. One thing to note, some of you were in the room when we talked about a meeting to be held with the select board, school committee, finance committee, board of health, community planning commission, and economic development committee. We were initially talking about that meeting taking place tomorrow night. Then we were trying to have it on Wednesday, but the room was not available that evening, I believe. And so, that meeting will now occur in this room on Thursday evening, March 2nd. Again, that is specific to the wastewater project for brief presentation and more importantly, discussion and feedback from the committees I just identified. 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto.
But I do not have any further comment. I just wanted to provide an opportunity.
Sure. Do you have the presentation, just in case? And I don't know if there's any other further discussion on this point from my colleagues. I think when we discussed it last week, there was a rollout of the, of the different options, which was a, which was a whole-town pay-for-the-project option to assess a betterment, option to assess no betterment but an opt-in and privilege fee, and a man swimming in the ocean up there. So, let's see.
Madam Chair, through you, tomorrow's meeting was not an information session. It was a meeting for the boards and committees. And yes, it will take place on Thursday, March 2nd here. There is no wastewater-specific meeting tomorrow evening.
Okay.
And I'm going to go right to that slide, Madam Chair.
Gilberto, yeah.
I think that's the one that probably will generate the most discussion. And of course, now I am unable to share my screen.
All right. I mean, I think it's important for us to kind of, you know, focus in, zone in on this as we continue to deliberate the options that are available. So, the first one was that no betterment, and this was just, you know, in the first column, no betterments or privilege fees. And the project cost would be, the project cost is going to be a cost for every taxpayer in any event. So, in terms of the shared cost of it, there is a portion that would be an increase for every taxpayer to contribute towards it. I don't know about my colleagues, but I've had a lot of feedback from different people, not necessarily abutters, on even a, you know, question on why this half would say, why should we be covering something that's going to benefit? The other half say, we should be covering that because it's going to benefit the whole community. So, it's a lot of that feedback, just as we're talking with our, you know, colleagues in the community, is kind of important to me. But to me, it seems pretty even, pretty evenly divided in terms of this. But I think also the opt-in, which is the, which what we, is what you explained to us, Mr. Studo, is the opt-in provision is that abutters along the route wouldn't pay for that extra assessment. It would be a fee to opt-in to tie in when that abut or, you know, whenever that building or abut wants to tie in. So, they, they would have what's called a privilege fee paid. And there was, this is kind of an estimate of that, that cost as it was, as you were going along. So, there were three different opt-ins for value that we were shown. Five, 10, and 20 as examples of the opt-in value. And then the betterment leaned on, upon construction, which is the betterment. If the bylaw happens to change that, first would go to a vote of the abutters for, you know, a percentage. If that, if that bylaw gets, reverts back, it still would have to have that component voted on ahead of time to be able to incorporate it into what we would be saying, yes, this is, this is how it's going to be paid. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that.
Just that, to, the first two options speak to Mr. Kelleher's point that if we were to set a fixed, figure number, the overruns, you know, that's kind of, the tie-in would be fixed, and that the, any overruns would go to the rest of the town. That the way we would do it from a simple standpoint, as we kind of clarified, is that, let's say we chose the one in the middle. Example, we haven't, I'm just trying to make an example. 10,000 is what the single-family home tie-in is. But if this project all-in ended up being 140 million instead of 130, that extra 10 million would go, you know, to the, to the general fund debt exclusion, however you want to call it. So, just something to point out that from a standpoint of the, taking all the feedback and then coming up with a reasonable proposal, this one, you know, this option right here, whether it's option one or two with the tie-in, can be viewed as very reasonable from a standpoint that the entire town kind of pays it forward. So, I'll just add that because I do think that's important. What Mr. Kelleher said, that, you know, any, if a number is set, the board needs to understand that if the cost balloon, it's going to the entire town. And at that point, I mean, once it's, you know, once the ship sailed, the ship sailed. You know, it's not, it's not like you're not going to put, what's another 10 million on one-third? You know, so, joke.
And I know that to Mrs. Hurl, but it's a point, it is a pretty, it is a pretty significant project. And a lot of the things that we do here, and I'm a broken record in terms of this, is we do spend a fair amount of time, not just on budgeting and strategic planning for the town, but trying to figure out how to generate new growth for the town. And I think it can't be underscored that, you know, we don't, we can't really match our, what we take in, our revenues, to really what the cost of services is. So, there's a lot of thinking around the table by the select board during these meetings on, how do we generate, how do we generate more revenue? Yes, it is, it is paid for upfront, but down the road with these areas that it's proposed in, it's obviously designed to generate new growth, to bring in that new revenue. We talked a lot the last meeting about, well, when are you going to do a split rate? That's impossible. That's never going to, never going to happen. You heard from residents saying that. But the idea of a split tax rate down the line is something different than generating new growth for the town. Down the, down, some of these corridors, some of the corridors like North Street are pretty well developed there. Might be additional spaces there for development. But some of the corridors, like the Main Street and Concord Street corridors, have a lot of ability to, you know, generate some new development, new growth, new business coming into the community. So, it's a strategic plan, as well, a part of the strategic plan, to try to help bring in new revenue to the town. And down the line, perhaps there'll be a shift in tax rate. But we really have to offer, we have to be able to offer something to, you know, to do that split tax rate. We don't really have that right now. So, I think it can't be underscored enough that right now, our revenue doesn't meet costs. So, we're consistently going back and trying to look at things, basic level services, and what we can do and what we want to do versus what we can do based on that, you know, cap in what we have coming in. And, you know, we've had some, some healthy financial circumstances due to the new growth that, from the Pulte homes, that's really helped us, carry us through in these past few budget years when we've seen that, that development come online. And we've seen the tax revenue from those, from those, the new, the new buildings that they've brought on. So, I think that we really need to do a better job to you expressing why we think it's a good idea. We know it's one of the most expensive projects and it's only three roads. Be great if we could sewer the whole town, if the town wanted that. But that's not really something that's even in the, in the works. And it would be nice to be able to offer that down side streets once this came in. But we just have to focus on this one piece and see if the town wants to go for this and bring in that, usher in that sewer down these corridors. And hopefully, that will bring more, more business and more development to those areas. I don't know if anybody else has anything to add. You know, we're close to public comment, and if my colleagues would indulge me on this, I would like to, I would. comment, and if my colleagues would indulge me on this, I would like to, I would like to hear from people that are sitting here, listening, listening to this, if it, if it's okay.
Do you bring up a, up a comment, question?
Well, I mean, is there anything else to my colleagues that want to add to this? Because I know Mr. Yole had his hand up, and I really would like to hear from people that, that are sitting here, so.
I actually have a question for my colleagues who weren't. Is there, on, you've had about a couple of weeks to look. Again, this is feedback that me and Mr. O'Leary have to get from everybody. Is, you know, is there any initial thoughts that you have at this point? You don't have to, if they're not complete, you don't have to share them, but I'm just curious if there is any initial thoughts on the different options, and if there's questions about them, because I feel that we're definitely, right now, in the late stages of the feedback, and eventually, the board's gonna have to make a decision, and that's what we have to bring to the community. So, any, anything helps, you know. And again, the reason I ask here is because we are, we are not allowed to do this any other way. So, as much as I would love to know what everybody on the board thinks, I can't, I can't. I have to wait and do it here.
Mr. Wallner.
I'll jump in. Yeah. So, I'm gonna repeat what I said the last time, which is, on the privilege fee, it's, it may be a state law that we have to change or whatever, but, you know, the 20,000, let's just call it the $10,000 privilege fee is today, but the cost is gonna continue to go up over years. So, is it 10,000 in 10 years, 10,000 in 20 years? There should be an, there should be some sort of an inflation factor on that, because if you decide to jump in now, 10,000 is appropriate, but the cost of doing that is gonna go up over time, just like we saw with the repairing or replacing a sewer. They're not gonna stay stable for the next 10, 15, 20, 30 years. So, that privilege, you know, that privilege works very nicely from the way I see it, but we also need to escalate the, the base amount that it starts at. So, I think that's a big thing there.
So, what, what do you?
Mr. Ickman might answer that, right?
Well, I just wanna, let me just ask you a question, though. So, in other words, if it was, you would tie it to a privilege fee set at, let's say, for example, 20, 25 is 5,000, and 20, 30 is 10,000.
Or you could tie it to?
Yeah. I'm just, we're just, we're just.
Some metric, some index. You could tie it to an index.
Yeah. And we don't want to put it upon the attorney, because it's unfair. That's something that has to be researched. We don't, we don't want an answer. We don't want a yes or a no, because we need to have the attorney do the, do, do.
But I think that's, that makes that very attractive, because then your 10,000 starts here, and then, you know, and then it would go up with the cost of whatever index we want to track it to. But that makes sense, because people are deciding to join in or not join in, so it's an at-risk charge, basically, in my mind.
Okay.
Whereas betterment would hit right away, right? So, it would hit, it would be an immediate, betterment would be an immediate thing, so you wouldn't have to have any escalation on that. So, that's one thing. The second thing is that, the, you know, when we talk about, I mean, the chair was starting to talk about how, you know, we're, we're not getting, you know, we're gonna be starting hitting some problems with services. I mean, we have needs to build a fire station. We have needs to build an intergenerational community center in town. These are, in our town, if you go to Town Hall, I mean, we've been in meetings where the shelves have fallen off the walls while we were there. I mean, these are three things that really need to be improved. And the, and the, and the schools, if you talk to the school committee, which I have, and people have, is that the Budget Committee's done a great job in the background, making everything work. And so, the town has never experienced in a long time pain when it comes to the schools. But that pain from the schools is coming, because if we don't do something to increase beyond the 2.5 percent, we're gonna start to hear things like, "Okay, we need to start to increase class sizes. Okay, we need to start to lay people off. Okay, we need to cut back on services." That is always the go-to plan for when you're, our revenue's getting tight, and revenue's gonna get tight. So, the last thing on this one, going back to this for a second, is that the biggest thing is, I'm, I'm more in favor of the privilege than the betterment at this point, if we had that escalation in there. But the also, I would like to see the working group come up with, as we start to generate revenue, because as you can see right here, the rate, the debt exclusion for average single-family home stays in the privileged zone at $1,116 per year, right? So, that stays across the way. What we don't know is, as we start to have businesses open, as we start to get commercial revenue, that's gonna be generating revenue that I think should be earmarked for helping to pay this debt off. So, if the town, is it in general, is going to be investing their money in order to make this happen, I think that when the revenues start to come in, like anybody who invests, you should get some sort of a return. I don't know what that formula is, but there should be some formula, so that when the revenues come in, the taxpayers, who are taking this on good faith, that everything's gonna work out, will start to get a return on investment, whether that means we pay off the debt sooner, whether that means we somehow reduce the, you can't reduce the property tax rate. But, I mean, somehow, I'd like to see the investors be able to get a return on what I believe. I mean, again, I just drove down Main Street yesterday. I mean, look at the empty buildings. I mean, this is ridiculous. If you go up to Andover, I mean, there's hardly any storefronts that are empty. If you go down to Reading, they're building things. We're in the middle, you know, we, we are closing stores, we're closing fronts, we have empty buildings. I mean, it's, it's very obvious that when we open this up, we are gonna get development. There's no doubt about that in our mind. So, anyways, a return on investment for the investors, in whatever capacity we can do that, that makes sense. And I don't know how to do that, but I'm asking for that.
Thank you, Ms. Wallner.
I'll give some.
Mrs. Gonzalez, hold on. If you just, hold on, just so Mr. Sudo can just maybe answer that.
The last thing, I think, what we talked about last time, and, you know, the best way, and I'm gonna oversimplify it, but that, the 1116 number may not change. However, it may just go away sooner, kind of like, you may pay down your debt on your mortgage, and your payment stays the same, unless, of course, you refi or recast it. But that's, I think, the mechanism would be. That plus some of the revenue going into the maintenance fund that we discussed. And also, though, I want to bring up from a, from a, from a standpoint of, because you brought up the number, 1,100 today is not 1,100 in 10 years, because that 1,100 will stay the same, but hopefully, everybody in this room, whether you receive a fixed income of a pension, social security, or work, your income should go up. I'm not saying it's always gonna go up 8.7 percent, like my parents were pleasantly surprised, you know, this year. But again, that 1,100 stays the same, so it will be
A smaller shrinking.
Correct.
Part of your property tax.
So, and that's the beauty of being able to finance long-term through some of these, like preferential rates.
Okay. Mrs. Gonzalez.
So, I too prefer the privilege option. And I also like that you changed from, we discussed opting out. I like that it's an opt-in. I like that it's a, no, you know, nobody's forced, you can opt-in if you choose. I think that that's a, that was a good change. My, my question is, I'm gonna go back to our special town meeting, and if we go back to the original bylaw, can this happen?
The last option?
Any of it.
The last one can. The first two, yes.
The first two can?
Yes. So, you can't stop the first two if town meeting votes it, in, in all. Well, the town meeting has to vote it. That's gonna stop it.
But if, if the bylaw reverts back.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't negate an assessment, but it would require abutters, you know, under the formula, to vote, to say yes to it. And it, it would be the 50%.
You'd have to kick it.
So, it would change the.
The numbers.
It would change the numbers, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, like how, those numbers can't stay that way if, if it reverts back.
Well, then.
The fir, the first two.
Don't involve an assessment.
Do not involve the betterment bylaw at all. So, if one of these two options is presented at town meeting, the bylaw, from our understanding, does not apply at all.
Right.
So, it's a moot point, meaning that whether we go back to the old one or the new one, if the board decides to, let's say, go with the middle one, with a privileged tie-in, and that gets presented at town meeting, that does not require a prior vote of the abutters, because there's no, there's no betterment. So, the betterment law only applies if there's a betterment. So.
Okay.
Can that answer?
Makes sense.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Just from my perspective, and just getting this and absorbing it, too, I, I, I always had a struggle with the, with the assessment. I always had a struggle with that. I understand why that was one of the first considerations, because, I mean, I remember going back to Mr. Marsieri, looking at this when this first came through, trying to figure out a financial formula. And he was basically the financial guru, right? If he figured things out, he would figure out, "We struggled with a balanced budget then on services. We wanted to provide, different departments wanted to provide. We, we cannot do that because we're capped." And there were some, I, I believe the two things that primarily, since my time on the board, helped the town, were the, the Pulte homes, you know, Prisco bringing in Pulte homes, and that new growth, and then Prisco's, you know, the, the health insurance, the health insurance arrangement.
Yeah.
Which was also something that, that Mr. Prisco brought in. And I think those two things, in and of themselves, have helped us. And before that, it was always Mr. Marsieri's looking at these things, trying to figure out, how, what can we do? How can we cover this? How can we cover that? But we're always at level services, where we want to have more done that we can't. And, and so, realistically speaking, when we have to sit back and say, "We can't afford this. We have to cut this. We can't add this extra." You know, we wanted to do a special education department. We can't, we, we need it, but we can't do it. But we have to, so we can't put that upon people that have come before us and said, "They're on a budget, too. There's no way I can afford 35,000, 46,000," and, nor does it match up to my, the value of my home. So, even though down the line, it might have more value by, you know, sale value or some, but someone who's living there with a fixed income, who's got their own budget that they're, they're sticking to, and when their times are lean, they have to look back at their budget and say, "We have to make cuts. That's what we do. We have to figure out where we have to, where we can figure things out here. Why would we put it upon those individuals to have to pay the lion's share of something that we all have sat here and recognized is gonna be beneficial to the whole town ultimately, down the line?" So, there's a little pain point of paying for it in advance, but down the line, we know that it, that new development will come in. So, I've always had, and I'm only one out of the five to make the recommendation, but I've always been against the, the assessment, to the degree it was rolled out at least.
Betterment.
Excuse me, a betterment. Yeah, betterment assessment, yeah. I've always, I know, betterment assessment. I'm sorry. When I say assessment, I'm talking about betterment, because it just doesn't seem like, especially when we heard the, from the gentleman on North Street that came to our meeting, like, a couple of months back, and just, you know, he has his home. He's worked hard to get his home. He's, he's paid for his home. He's on an, you know, that's impossible. That's too big to put upon people. And, and I hear that, and I understand that. He's not gonna make a big addition. He's, he wants to stay here. We are all about keeping people in the community. But I also think that the, they are still gonna benefit by the potential to develop their lots and grow, so that the privilege fee at the time of tie-in, I think, to me, is the option. I think that's the best, because then we have the ability to, everybody could contribute to it, and then, because it is gonna benefit the town at large. And then, at least in my opinion, it will. And then, we have the tie-in that'll go down, to pay down the debt. But then, I'm still struggling with the big price tag of it, and, and can we, can we, you know, we need the, we need the yes to be able to go solicit extra funds to get that number down. And we, we, we know, we know that we've been in this situation, so we have this, we're going back to. It's the biggest project that we have, so.
So, that's a good point you bring up, because these numbers are based on no funding.
Or growth.
Or growth, right. So, if we get, if we get the yes, we can get funding.
You could solicit.
We can, right. We can solicit funding, and those numbers can come down. So, that's an important thing for people to know also. We cannot solicit those funds until the yes vote goes through. That's what we are told. So, we can't work that, we can't work that in, because we don't know what it would be.
Yeah, that's true. But I think in terms of this, this, to me, the middle one of the opt-in.
I agree.
And then maybe trying to work in some sort of, you know, it, you know, not, not, not every five years it goes up five, but just some, some tie-in that, you know, for the life of the project, tying in, and then it, it ends at a certain point. And then, you know, all of that goes back towards the, the debt exclusion. I, I agree. Mrs., Mrs. Gonzalez.
I think also something that, that we need to say maybe in a different way, of, like you were saying, you know, we're, we're level funding, not so much what can happen if this goes through, but to think about what's going to happen if it doesn't. And we continue on the road we're on, and no new revenue comes in, because we don't, because this didn't go through. We're gonna struggle, and it's going, you're right. Classroom sizes are gonna go up.
Yeah.
People are gonna be laid off. I mean, that's the reality. This is an option we can think about to change that, and bring new revenue in, and not have to do that.
And I, and I'll make one last comment, just, and then, and then if there's anything else. But poor Mr. Yolesman's standing there for a while. I just know.
He's leaning.
I'll make one last comment, that the other, the other thing that I've heard quite fre- frequently is, you know, you know, drive-through Reading, drive-through, drive-through Reading, then drive-through North Reading, then drive-through Andover, and it, and it's kind of obvious. And then people say, "We don't want to be Reading. We don't want to be Andover. We don't want to be the..." That's really not the point. The point really is, you can see the, the, the capability, I think. That's the point, is you, you could see the capability, the, the development potential. And, and there is, there is a stark difference, unfortunately. I don't want us to be a pass-through city. I'd like to see some, something there that, that allows for development, allows for growth. We, we have other areas in the town that we, we, we talked about, these other projects that, the sewer project where the, the town, the town, oh my goodness, the.
The fire department?
Right, right, right. So, we have other capabilities to be able to tie in there, the systems that the town said yes to earlier, that we, we're trying to sort out, that, that we have, you know, studies on, and that we're moving forward on. But I, I think if, if this comes through, at least on those major corridors, we'd be able to see some more businesses come in that'd be interested in, in being here, and maybe even businesses that are already along the route, growing their business, or expanding their business, expanding jobs and things like that, bringing some more revenue in to the, to the town. And, and that isn't to say, "We're trying to be like Andover. We're trying to be like Reading." We have the opportunity now through Andover, and we've been, we've known about this since we tied into Andover's water instead of Reading, but now we have the chance to do it. And I think it's really a, an opportune moment that we need to, for the betterment of the town, move forward on. That's just my, that's just my two cents, so. Ms. Gilberto, you are, everything all right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. He's, he's, he's being vigilant about the online, so. All right. Is there anything else to, just to my colleagues, before we just go to public comment?
I'll just say, right now, I've been studying, and I've been talking to Deb Carbone, our tax person. We've been ranging 85 to 88 percent residential, so we're truly a bedroom community. That's what we are. Anybody's in a bedroom community, you end up paying a lot in taxes. In her opinion, once we hit 80 percent, if we increase our commercial, once we hit 80 percent, we're gonna be able to potentially start thinking of a dual tax rate, which would be a lot different than it was before. And from my point of view, you're right, we're not Reading, we're not Andover, but we have so many empty buildings and so many empty lots, that we could invent what we want for our town. And there's already been studies done in the past, Economic Development Committee has done it, M.A.P.C. has done, is that the amount of money, discretionary money, that leaves our town from our residents, because they have nowhere to spend it. How many people say, "I'm gonna go downtown on my weekend"? You don't. You go elsewhere. There's a tremendous amount of money that leaves our town, because they'd rather spend their money elsewhere than our own town. That's a real deficit. And there's also, we've had multiple studies that have looked at Main Street, especially around the, the Ocean Lot area and that kind of area, where there's been significant interest in developing that into a mixed-use area. And that's come from a number of different, you know, we've done, I've sat through three, four. four workshops where that ended up to be the central theme. And we did that UMass Gerontology study that hit a number of residents and that, that also came up as a theme. So there's a lot of interest in doing something and we can create it. I mean, the good news is we can create it because we have a lot of opportunities because we have so many empty buildings. So we can really kind of create our downtown the way we want it to be. So anyways, I see upside, but it's a long-term investment and that's the thing we have to keep in mind. It's a long-term investment in our town.
All right. We could, because I'd want, like to move on to public comment if that's okay and recognize.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yul, for your patience.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Yul, 427 Park Street. It's good to hear the deliberation from the committee. I guess what I'm trying to grab my, my head around is we only heard from four and Steve recused, recused himself. Must have had a reason, I'm sure, but I think it would be valuable for the public to know why he felt it this time to take a recusal and had Selectman O'Leary recuse himself on previous occasions on these, these discussions. Because I think it's important for the public to know why.
I think he recused himself, I don't know if he, yeah, he doesn't, I don't know that we, I don't know. We already allowed him to recuse himself, so I don't know that we need to get into the reasoning for that.
But if he's, if a selectman is making decisions on a process like this, has been doing in the past and is not doing in the future, we need to know what's the genesis for that person's opinion and decisions in the past and going forward. I think tonight's the only night that I recall that he's recused himself on this issue. So there must be a reason, and I think it's to the best interest of the public for transparency that we, we know what that is.
I don't know, Michael, I don't, I don't think we need to.
I have no comment.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, I, I think if, if you want to move on, I don't, then Mr. O'Leary doesn't want us to speak to that, but he's recused himself on our deliberations about this. So we're trying to decide on which proposal. So, you know, there's a question on our deliberation, I guess you could ask, but.
Yeah, well, if there's a conflict of interest, I guess we, we need to know that. I know in the past, usually you explain because you have a conflict, because you're in a butter, or you, because you are a, if there was a zoning law that it involved your property, you recused yourself because of that, so.
Jonathan.
You know, I was surprised to hear that. I think that's an important question to be answered. I mean, if he liked to answer it himself, he's fine, but.
I, I don't think we, if a member wants to recuse themselves, I don't think we, we would challenge that, Mr. Yul. We, we haven't in the past, so.
Well, I wasn't looking, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I wasn't looking for a challenge, I was just looking for an explanation, that's all.
I don't have one.
Thank you.
I don't have one. Thanks, Mr. Yul. Do we have any other public comment?
Mr. Gennaro.
Public comment. Mr. Gennaro. Do we have the mic?
I would, I would like to know.
Yeah, thank you.
Connection to Greater Lawrence, what we were talking about there. And I think members of the board mentioned one time or another that they had some relationship with Reading and the conversation, but it's not still been happening more. And I assume it was some financial head-to-head where they said, no, we're not going to work with you. But what is the, is there any structural reason why Reading isn't in the mix because it's much closer? Why, why is that?
Well, we.
You mean to head to Lawrence?
Excuse.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
I didn't have it, oh, I have it on you. You couldn't hear me?
No, I could.
Excuse me. As I understand your question, you're asking what's preventing us from.
Yes, ninety-three million to go to, ninety-three million to go from the town line to ten-point-three miles up to, up to Greater Lawrence. I would think that maybe you can get it down to fifty million if you go to Reading. So I don't know. What is, what is preventing Reading from accepting sewers?
I'm going to let, I'm going to actually let Mr. Gilberto. Actually, this also was a topic of multiple and multiple, multiple meetings where we were trying to determine, and the town voted to determine, to join the Andover. But let me let Mr. Gilberto specifically address that question for you.
I'd appreciate it.
We didn't tie in with Reading water supply. So we, we don't have an option to tie into Reading Sewer where we're not tied into their water supply and they're with the MWRA.
Right.
And we tied into Andover because it was a far better financial arrangement for the town and more controlled under that contract that we, we entered for the ninety-nine years with Andover. It was more financially beneficial for the town to get our water through Andover. And in that contract that we entered with Andover in two thousand and fifteen, I think it was, or sixteen, we, we also, Andover provided the option for us to, to, to work with us to make a connection, a pathway to sewer through their, the Greater Lawrence. So it's on the basis of that, that contract that the town entered with Andover years ago and the, the work that's been done with the officials from the town of Andover to be able to bring it to fruition just down these corridors and studying that connection and where it would be available through, through Andover. And then Mike, Mr. Gilberto, I don't know if there's anything else.
No, I think he answered it.
So you're saying it's just more enticing. Financially better and more.
And Mr. Warner?
No, it was just simply a capacity problem because the MWRA would only let us go down to Concord Street and that was it. They, they, there was like, they have a capacity problem.
Okay, they didn't want to go down Park Street.
That's, you could only get down Concord and that's it.
And you still do that? Is that still an option?
It's not even an option anymore.
No.
It's not even an option. But you wouldn't want to anyways.
What about Wilmington?
What's that?
Wilmington.
No, we're, we're blocked on all sides. The only exit out is through Andover and through the GLSS system. Yeah, that, I mean, I mean, we are truly, that, we are locked up. We can't go Wilmington, we can't go Middleton, we can't go Reading.
Oh, as I see it, you know, as everyone sees, it's a cash flow problem.
Yeah.
You know, and, and.
Well, it's not, not just that though, just Wilmington was never an option.
No, no, I'm not talking about that anymore. I'm just saying that the town getting the money to do this and doing, doing other, other things, as you mentioned, it's a, it's a, you know, you're, you're, you work for the town, you're in the accounting side, right?
No.
Oh, I thought you were.
I have a job.
Is there somebody here from the accounting side? Is it you?
The town, town accounting office?
Yeah.
No, not this evening.
Okay, there's no one here, okay. There probably should be somebody here in these, these talks. I'm sure they are, I'm sure they're, they're well aware of it. Have they offered any, any solution or is this part of their, did they help you draft this draft?
Well, I think the working committee, this is all considered within the working committee.
Michael, answer it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Gilberto.
Through you, Madam Chair. So the town accountant, the town's chief assessor and the town treasurer, collector are part of the working group and they are part of the discussions. The financial modeling in terms of the implementation of the betterment, that's generally been done by the Director of Public Works, who's here this evening, Mr. Parisi, who has extensive experience in assessing as well. To the issue you brought up, yes, it's a significant cash flow challenge that, that we face and we are trying to determine what the community finds to be the right balance to address that. And as has been stated, you know, clearly, the betterment-heavy model was not the model that the community wanted to see, not just the butters, but folks who lived elsewhere in town. We are looking for grants. There is a small reduction, you remember this was, I believe, a hundred and thirty-odd million dollar number. It's down a couple of million dollars based on some federal and state grants that we've secured and we're hopeful we'll secure some more funding. But the, the real significant funding is not available to us until we've indicated that we're, we're going forward with the project.
Yeah, when you, right before you finished the project, you mentioned there is a window of opportunity where you go for funding. The project has to be started, has to be underway, and before it's completed, you have to, you have to.
Through you, Madam Chair, it's earlier than that. It doesn't need to be even started or complete. I mean, it's already been started. We have funding for design.
I thought, I thought that was mentioned at the last meeting.
It, it, so we have sort of an endpoint where we would need to have the funding in place, but I expect that shortly after, if a town meeting approval were to occur and the project were going forward, authorize that with a debt exclusion because it would be conditional, that would be the point in time we would start looking. That would be many years before construction's finished, so.
Thanks, Mr. Gilberto. All set? Thank you, Mr. Yul. Sure, please, ma'am.
I just want to know why it's okay to not answer Mr. Yul's question.
We're not going to answer that.
This is a Q and A, but I don't understand why we can't get answers on that.
This is, it's really public comment and it actually is not a Q and A. We're being a little liberal about it because we're talking about the sewer discussion, but we're not going to Q and A answers about Mr. O'Leary. So Mr. O'Leary's recused himself and we're not doing a Q and A about that. But usually a public comment, we're just, we're actually not going back and forth like this. We're just accepting comment from the public. So if there's a comment that you have, we're, we're happy to accept it. We're, we are trying to answer questions so, because you're here and you're here for the presentation. So we are a little liberal with it today, but, and we've actually been pretty liberal with it.
What I'm trying to say is that we're the townspeople and it's our job to, to get answers that help the town, that's all.
Okay.
In a sense, you all work for us, you know? You work for yourselves, but we're all, you know, we're the townspeople.
We are, we are the townspeople. Agreed. Okay, so we have any other comment or I'm not even, I don't even know if I want to go to the, are you all set? Mr. Gilberto?
Can I say anything?
All right. Mr. Austin. Thanks, Mr. Yul.
So Adam Austin, forty-two Main Street. As I understand it, the new scenarios that we're looking at are purely financial differences in the project, correct? None of the infrastructures changed?
Correct.
I see that the presentations that we were given in the fall split the total eligible cost between special benefits facilities and general benefits facilities. And that ratio has changed significantly. Special benefits have more than doubled while the delta has come off of the general benefit facilities. Knowing that general benefit facilities are facilities that, that, you know, as it's, as it's laid out here, it says that they're the out-of-town pump stations as opposed to the in-town pump stations. That's not how it was divided before. Can you explain why that's changed or?
Through you, Madam Chair, the numbers that you see up here, we're purely trying to identify numbers that we thought were a starting point for public discussion. We have a breakdown that's, that's in there that I believe Mr. Parisi has put together and I don't recall if we went through it in the slideshow at the meeting, but I know it was requested and it was a backup document that was provided in response to a records request. But we basically, you know, and the DPW director can certainly correct me if I'm misstating it, but we tried to pick a number for a starting point for the discussion and really didn't allocate it any further than that in this model.
Sorry, so it, it's not something from this slide? It was presented at the last meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So in the fall, we had this breakdown, which shows a total eligible project cost of one hundred and twenty-nine million, one hundred thousand dollars, the same as this one, one hundred and twenty-nine million, one hundred thousand dollars. And here, general benefits were a little over a hundred million dollars and special benefits were twenty-eight million dollars where, yeah, just this breakdown versus this breakdown. The totals, the total hasn't changed, but, yeah.
I can bring it over there.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm just curious as to why the, the breakdown has changed.
And Mr., Mr., hopefully Mr. Parisi can edify that question.
Thank you.
He's talking about this slide from the Kleinfelder presentation showing that number and then this breakdown here.
Right, right. Yeah, so Joe Parisi, Director of Public Works. So you're absolutely correct. There is in-town pump stations that I think were originally part of the general benefits and now they are part of, in this estimate, the special benefits. And that's because the flow from the collection system is purely to those properties that are abutting the sewer system. So I think originally in our fall estimates, we were looking to make that a general benefits facility where others in other phases would be charged some portion of that cost, of those costs. And in reality, you know, there wouldn't be a, an opportunity to charge that off to other phases because their flow would not go through those pump stations. They're purely local to this particular phase.
Okay, sorry. So really, none of the flows have changed or, or they have?
The flows have not changed. I think in the original scenario in the fall, we, we were looking at pump stations that were probably mischaracterized as general benefits and should have been re-characterized as specific benefits.
Okay. And, and, and.
Mr. Stoudamard.
And to that point, Mr. Austin, it's something where, as we've gotten feedback and even talked more about it, like, again, understand too that that original plan in the fall was like, literally like you had to start somewhere, right? So it was like, this is what we had, like, and we really didn't, again, it, literally two weeks after we had it, like that first thing, it was presented at that, I don't know if you were there, that first meeting we had at the library, but it was, it was one of those. So again, what we've been trying to do is, and hopefully it's like seen, and I'm not saying anyone's agreeing with this new one, we're, we're trying to incorporate as much as we can, but it, but keep the, the project feasible at the same time, right? Because there's certain things, if you incorporate, it's like the numbers just don't work. So even with things that, I mean, I, I think Mr. Parisi just said may have gotten re-characterized based on how we're trying to structure it. It, it's just understanding though that the core costs are the same. If things get re-characterized, it's because on a second look, you know, because, because again, in a project of this magnitude, I just hope everyone understands that trying to get every single little detail right the first time around, it's just really, really difficult. And I'm not, I'm not an expert here, they are. Like, I, I don't do this, but I know even in my own business, if it's a very large account we're taking on, it is a rarity that the first proposal is anywhere near the finished product. So I just wanted to add that in because I think that's the other thing that, that there's, there's been so many revisions that it's not because we're just like, we didn't want to present it, it's just, the thought just didn't occur because we weren't hearing from, you know, matter of speaking, outside from our echo chamber, best way to put it.
Thank you. Mr. Austin?
Thank you.
Do you have?
I, I agree and appreciate that. It's just with the size of it, with it doubling, the special benefits doubling, that's clearly not just a, hey, you know, one extra pump station or something like that. It's, it's obviously some way to restructure the prices, restructure the costs, like you're saying. It's not clear at this point how that ties into this. So, I mean, it, clearly it was done for a reason that impacts these numbers, but how does that tie in? How does that?
So can you repeat your question so I can?
Yeah, just.
Have an answer?
Just clearly because of the, the size of it, because it basically doubled special benefits as opposed to general benefits. That, that must trickle into this calculation somehow. It was, it was done for a reason, you know, obviously it was pretty drastic is what I'm saying. It's not, oh, we just, you know, we figured out that this pump station really handles the flow in a different way than we thought. It's a, it's a big restructuring which must trickle into these numbers, but it's not evident how or why.
It doesn't really trickle into these numbers because these numbers are more arbitrary. They're not based on flow. The fall was based on flow. So when you look at the general benefits, you're looking at pump stations that have the capacity to carry more than just the capacity or the, the flow in phase one. They have capacity to carry flow in phase two plus growth, you know, new growth in phase one and two. And so whenever that, those properties or those phases are enacted. you charge some of those general benefits costs to those betterments that you assess at that time. You know, for the time being, the general fund is holding the cost of that until they can be assessed later on. So, you know, it's, it's a typical formula for how you would sort of apportion the cost between betterments, privilege fees, and whatever general fund would be contributing to the cost of the project as well.
Mr. Studo.
And I think, Mr. Austin, what you're asking for is the metric, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Work in reverse, right? And it's something where, on the, well, on the first, there is no metric, right? The town picks up the, it is what it is. But on the second, I think it's more of, what the board's going to decide is not necessarily going to be based in a metric. It's going to be based on what's a reasonable tie-in fee with possibility of an escalation clause. So, I, I think that it will be less scientific and more of, how do we, how do we satisfy the part of the town that believes that there will be some sort of gain of value, whether or not you believe it, right? And it can be like, listen, it's not a free ride, because at some point, if you tie in, now or later, really, all you're doing is covering kind of a pay it forward, I think you've heard me say this, but at the same time, to what you've remarked in a few times, versus the very high numbers of that first proposal, how do you make it that, hey, versus some other ways that things can go? I think we brought up the septic replacement, if you saw the slide, maybe one of these numbers. So, arbitrary in the point that I think that we, it's difficult, but we have to determine a number where everybody shares a little bit of the pain to get to the ultimate goal. And on the last one, it's more based on flow, right? Because you have to in the metric. This one's going to be more on just what the town decides. And again, that's just, I'm one of five, as Ms. Manipelli always says. So, I'm just trying to clarify that it's not, you're looking for a very specific scientific metric, and I, I appreciate that because I think I've mentioned what I do, and it's all about percentages all day and those, but I feel like if we go in the middle route, it's based more of, you know, how does the town want to go about it versus, you know, how much was Mr. Austin's water flow this month?
Thank you.
Are you all set?
Sorry, I just want to walk over and get my notes.
Yeah. All right. It sounds, it sounds like, it sounds like you were asking just, almost, sorry about that. It's almost sounds like you were asking for a breakdown of that 127. Is that, I'm not, I might, is that what you were asking for?
No. No, so I was just looking at slides from the last select board meeting and from the fall, looking at the breakdown.
Yeah.
And it's different, and we haven't talked about why or how that impacts the project. I was just trying to get some clarification on that. I think, I think I got that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, does anybody else, does any, okay.
I, I, I've seen you many times. I, I don't know your name, sir.
My name is Joe Parisi.
My Parisi. And, and what is your, you work for the board?
I'm the Director of Public Works.
And you just, if you have a comment, just please go ahead and.
Okay, yeah, I just want to know, because you, you seem to be the person who puts together all the figures and understands the, the things, correct? Okay. The, you touched on something that I was asking before. Do we know any information about different phases? And you said, no, we don't. And then I found out through, through somebody here that Phase Two is the, is the, the Martin's Pond area, so there is something there. But you, you mentioned the, the, the basins, the catch basins, the pump stations. And, and I'm not sure if I understand what, what Mr. Austin was talking about. I didn't follow whether it's in flow or this or that. But anyway, do the people that you were referring to know that those costs will be put on their doorstep when, when the time comes? Have they been apprised of that, of that need for them to pay the, the upfront cost of that? Or time payment cost?
You say the people, are you talking about?
The, the other residents. I, I live on Park Street, so I'm, I'm in a butter. But the people who I think you were referring to weren't necessarily a butters. There were more people who would come on later, and they would.
You're talking about Phase Two?
Well, I don't know. You, you, I don't know what phase it is, but I don't think it was Martin's Pond you were referring to.
No, it was Martin's Pond.
Oh, was it? Okay, so do, do the Martin's Pond residents know that that cost will be shared by them?
There have been some residents here from the Martin's Pond area that I think may have heard that conversation.
But have they been notified, like we were notified of the 46,000?
Yeah, I mean, they haven't been notified. They, they, there's no cost that's going to be assessed to them.
No cost?
No, I mean, there's nothing to be assessed until such time there might be an, an extension into that area.
Yeah, but the things are, there's going to be built in the beginning, those basins is going to be there.
No, not, not in the Martin's Pond area.
I thought we were talking about basins, catch basins along, along Route 28.
We're not going to talk over each other, please.
I'm sorry, could you say?
I thought you were talking about catch basins and pump stations along Route 28.
So, what I was saying is, there's general funds, which are basically pump stations and force mains where all of the combined flows of the town would flow through, and any, any future phase would also flow through. Those pump stations are designed for a larger capacity than just the current Phase One area. They could carry up to 500,000 gallons per day, but, you know, the first phase is something much less.
Now, those, those are called specific, um, um, betterments, or is that what you, you had two names, a specific or?
Betterments and privilege fees.
Yeah, now, the extra capacity in those pipes, you could have gone with a smaller pipe, could have, could have served the town for the next 20 years, but you decided to go with.
We, so the project is a 500,000 per, 500,000 gallons per day, permitted, seeking a permit from GLSD for that.
Yeah, so what I'm, what I'd like to ask, ask the town here is that, is that amount of money, the extra capacity, a general benefit rather than a specific benefit? And could that amount be shared with other townspeople? Because they will inherit that when it, when it comes time, that they're going to be connected up.
Mr. Mills, you had a point of order. It is still the public comment, and we're trying to be a little liberal in the Q and A, but we're going to close off your, we're going to let that be your last question so that we can move on. So, I don't even know if you can answer that question. So, if you can answer, then answer, and then we're going to move on to other people to have an opportunity to speak and, and comment. But yes, we're, we are, we are, we're being a little bit more lax about this with the Q and A, but we're going to cut it off so we can, because we also have other business to get to, too, so. Can you answer, Mr. Parisi?
I don't, I don't think, I have a clear understanding of the question and probably couldn't until, I mean, I'd be, I'd be willing to talk to you one-on-one.
Thank you, Mr. Parisi. I think that's probably a better.
I think that would be more productive that way.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, sir, yes, please, thanks, Mr. Yule.
So, I've heard a lot of comparison to Andover, Redding, Middleton, surrounding towns, about what we are is North Reading, what we're looking for and all that, but just a public comment is what I don't want to see us turn into is something like Wilmington. It was a really nice, quiet town, and a lot of development came and ruined it, in my opinion. I just don't want to see North Reading deal with that, should this go through. So, it's just something I think should be considered on limitations of apartment complexes. I mean, they've had over 300 in the past two years approved. That's what I'm concerned about. That's what scares me about doing sewer. It's not the money flow, it's not the taxes, it's nothing else. It's the image of the town being destroyed. And so I think it's just something that should be considered, and that's really my only comment.
Can we get your name?
Appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, Robert Dearing, 31 Freedom Drive.
Appreciate the comment. Okay. Any other question, comments or public comments, or we're all set? All right, we're going to close public comment and move on to the next order of business. Thank, thank you, Mr. Yule, again, once again. All right, to my colleagues, I'm going to ask if we just can pass over the item number nine. We kind of already accidentally did, so, but we'll take that up at our next meeting. Because I didn't have my glasses on, so we jumped to public comment, and I apologize. And our next order of business is the meeting minutes. Mr. Wallner, do we have a motion? For the February 13th?
Yep, he's going to take, yep, February 13th. Yep, Madam Chair, I move to approve the February 13, 2023 regular session minutes, minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manipelli is aye. I'm actually not sure why I'm doing a roll call, so. I'm going to make an announcement with respect to the minutes that we have reviewed, and for the members in attendance, we've been taking the, the portions of executive session minutes at each meeting in executive session be, in a closed session before the meeting to review based on public record. So, to read further into the record, the acknowledgment of release of portions of select board execution, executive session minutes dated July 6, 2020, section?
Six.
Section 6.4?
6.4, 12 and 14 Concord Street. Okay, now, Anderson, I'm sorry, it's late. 7, 20, 20, 20, Section 3 SSBC litigation. 8, 3, 20, 20, Section 6.4, 12 and 14 Concord Street. 9, 12, 20, 20, Section 3 SSBC litigation. 12, 7, 20, 20, Section 3 SSBC litigation. 12, 17, 20, 20, Section 3 Fire on Fair Labor Practice. 1, 25, 20, 21, Section 2 Non-Union. 2, 22, 20, 21, Section 3 SSBC litigation. 3, 15, 20, 21, Section 3 SSBC litigation. 6, 21, 20, 21, Section 3 SSBC litigation. 7, 12, 20, 21, Section 3 SSBC litigation. 8, 16, 20, 21, Section 3 SSBC litigation. 9, 8, 20, 21, Section 3 SSBC litigation. 9, 20, 20, 21, Section 3 SSBC litigation. 10, 4, 20, 21, Section 3 SSBC litigation. Under the open meeting law, subject to any necessary redactions under the public records law, and acknowledgment of the review and continued non-disclosure of portions of the select board executive session minutes dated 7, 20, 20, 20, Section 3 Firefighters. 9, 21, 20, 20, Section 3 Firefighters, DPW. 10, 19, 20, 23, Section 3 20 Elm Street. 12, 7, 20, 20, Section 3 20 Elm Street. 1, 25, 20, 21, Section 3 Firefighters, NRAS, DPW. Section 2 Non-Union. 2, 22, 20, 21, Section 3 20 Elm Street. 3, 15, 20, 21, Section 3 20 Elm Street. 4, 12, 20, 21, Section 3 20 Elm Street. Section 2 Non-Union. 4, 26, 20, 21, Section 3 Non-Union. 5, 10, 20, 21, Section 3 Firefighters, NRAS, Section 2 Non-Union. 5, 24, 20, 21, Section 3 20 Elm Street. 6, 12, 20, 21, Section 3 Firefighters. 7, 12, 21, 20, 21, Section 3 Library. Section 2 Non-Union. 8, 16, 20, 21, Section 3 Non-Union. 9, 8, 20, 21, Section 6 Property, Property Valuation. 9, 20, 20, 21, Section 2 Non-Union. Section 3 Fire, DPW, and Fire. 10, 18, 20, 21, Section 3 Firefighters. Section 2 Non-Union. 11, 16, 20, 20, Section 3 DPW Teamsters Local 25, under the open meeting law. And acknowledgment of release of portions of select board executive session minutes dated 5, 10, 20, 21, Section 2 Non-Union. 9, 8, 20, 21, Section 2 Non-Union. And we can move on to Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reading from my written report, I'm pleased to inform you that the North Reading Police Department has been re-accredited by the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission. It's happened a couple of times in my tenure and in some of the board members' tenures. I included in my report a copy of the related media advisory that should be, I think, in the newspaper later this week. I attached a, a public records access report from Town Clerk Susan Duplin. Unfortunately, due to an unintentional oversight, multiple public records requests were inadvertently not responded to between mid-November and early February. This led to notices being submitted by the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Public Records Division. We are in the process of responding to each public records request, and in some cases are asking that the requests be narrowed so that we can better respond. These requests are separate and apart from the recent open meeting law complaints and ongoing review of executive session minutes. I wish to publicly apologize to any resident who has been adversely impacted by this unintentional oversight. While we are not perfect, I know the Town Clerk and I remain committed to the public's access to public records and pride ourselves on timely response. Additional safeguards and a tracking mechanism have been put in place to avoid this type of failure from occurring in the future. I wish to provide the board, the community of, excuse me, I wish to provide the board and the community an update on two ongoing hiring processes. First, the town has recently completed advertising and received applications for the position of Finance Director. I intend to have a screening committee consisting of HR Director Bob Collins, DPW Director Joe Parisi, Assistant Superintendent of Schools for Finance and Operations, Michael Conley, and a representative of the Finance Committee to assist in screening candidates. Second, as has been referenced in budget meetings in recent years, Police Chief Michael Murphy has informed me of his, of his intention to retire in August. The town is in the process of contracting with a third-party public safety assessment company to assist in evaluating finalists. I intend to have a screening committee consisting of HR Director Bob Collins, Fire Chief Don Stats, the Superintendent of Schools, and a community representative to assist in screening candidates with a goal of an appointment in place as or on or about June 1st. And that concludes my comments, thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Gilberto? Mr. Wallner?
Just any, the grant writer, how's that recruiting going?
So, we, we have two candidates that we've looked closely at. We have a bit of a struggle about where we're going to put the candidate, should we hire somebody. We have a couple of options in the town hall that we're looking at, one of which may be in some space that may free up in DPW, but we're, we're seeking to try to address that, so we are hopeful. One option that we are looking for, or I should say considering, is potentially a, a hybrid or even remote work arrangement for some period of time for the person if we can address that. But we did get a couple of candidates that were encouraged by.
Good.
To bring on board.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I write the trail?
When, what did you say, Mr. Yule? Okay. Okay, next order of business. Let's do old and new business and board member reports all together. Mr. Wallner?
Just a quick question, liaison assignment, so I believe LeAnn is responsible for transportation, is that right? I just want to get this straightened out, because the other, I don't know, is that true? I don't know.
I would have to look at it.
Okay, so.
I have no idea.
Because then the.
At this moment in time, I don't have it memorized.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
And that's fine, because I'm trying to get the energy.
Do you want to swap with LeAnn?
It, it, it doesn't, it, it's really six of one, half dozen another. Just, if I'm going to work on the energy one, I just want to go working on that one, so.
You wanted to work on transportation?
Either, either one, doesn't matter to me, the.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is Lil Hartman is going to take on the majority of the transportation. She has the expertise, she has the force for it. I mean, it's, it affects her entire group, so, you know, as liaison, obviously, you'll be doing some, but I'd be just following in the path like you will of what Lil's going to do.
Okay.
So, the.
I have to look at it, but I promise you I'll do that before next meeting.
Because then the energy, the energy committee, you know, the energy conservation committee, like to get that going.
Yeah.
And so it's just where do I put my energy?
Yeah.
That's all I'd like to know.
Okay.
Where to put my energy?
All right.
Thank you.
O'Leary, do you have any answer for that?
Whatever energy we have.
It's O'Leary, are you looking it up? That might be an old.
Oh, he's got it.
I don't have transportation, though.
Because I, isn't it new?
It was.
It's a newly created.
Yeah, it's new.
It's a newly created.
Transportation is newly created.
Yeah.
And I.
Energy conservation.
I might be wrong, but I thought at a meeting that that was decided, that I was going to do that, but.
To do what, transportation or?
Yeah.
I, I, I don't, it's not my, it's up to the chair to decide.
I, I haven't even, I don't even, I would, I don't remember what we did. We'll have to look back at our minutes on that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I don't know why I had that assumption.
Mr. Wallner?
Oh, and the last thing is, I see that, I think that CPC meeting tomorrow, they're going to talk about the accessory dwelling unit policy. I saw that on the agenda.
Yes. That's great.
With the hope that we'll see it before. Great.
Yes.
Great. That'd be great.
Trying to move that along.
Thank you very much. Really looking forward to seeing that, because...
Do you think that'll be ready for the warrant for the June, or is it too late?
Well, I, they got to bring it to us. I mean, they got to, you know, they got to share with us what they're thinking, but it's been on their docket for a long time, so, you know, I've been begging and pleading as we needed. I mean, when we talk about increasing people's taxes, you know, I mean, it's like, this is important stuff. This is really important stuff. This is going to define whether people bail on us or, you know, stay in town.
Living, living, living. I don't know, though, I mean, I'm going to tell you with the weather report if that meeting will even happen.
Okay.
So we'll see.
Yeah, okay.
Generally, zoning bylaws are...
I'm sorry.
It's going to be all virtual.
It's virtual. So it's going to happen.
Thank you, okay.
Virtually.
Primarily zoning changes come in October, not June. Anyway.
Oh.
June...
Can there be an exception or no?
Historically, it's fiscal matters.
Right. No, I know, but that would be a good one to move along.
Yeah, no, if we can get it moving, that's fine.
Well, maybe that's the target.
But I, I don't know what the CPC's target is.